Thank you. I would like to open up this meeting. This is, uh, date is May 12th. It's about 6:00. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall. There are no scheduled hearings. Public input may be provided using the following methods. Contact our office at Board of Selectmen at dyton-ma.gov or call 774-872-0920 during the meeting. Excuse me, via Zoom, you can go onto Zoom and the meeting ID number is 842-9552-3321 and the pass code is 308528. YouTube channel for later viewing and will be streamed live on Facebook. Live on Facebook at facebook.com/townofdyton. It should also be live on Channel 9 hopefully. Call to order, roll call of the members. Uh, Mr. Hull?
Present.
Dr. Z?
Present.
And Ken Pacheco is present. We're all participating at Town Hall. I would ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing, please.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask for a moment of silence for the following people.
Since the last meeting, six Dyton residents have passed. Our thoughts, prayers, and condolences go out to their families and friends. Uh, I would like to read their names. Alfred Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco served his country honorably in the U.S. Army during the Korean War. In 1971, he became a police officer with the Dyton Police Department, a job he faithfully served with integrity and distinction for 26 years, retiring as the Chief of Police in 1997. He also had the distinction of serving as a department's first K-9 officer, the first court officer, and the first department instructor. Also passing, John C. Costa. John was a longtime member of the Lions Club and a resident of Dyton for over 40 years. He was a Navy veteran during the Vietnam War and a member of the Dyton Community Church. Also passing, Natalie Brewer. Natalie was born in Dyton to Joseph and Gertrude Sylvia. She was a member of the Pilgrim Congregational Church in Taunton and was the mother-in-law of former Board of Selectmen Thomas Pius and the grandmother of Human Rights Committee member Kristen Pius. Also passing, George Mendoza. George was 95 years old. He moved to Dyton from Osona in 1949 and was an Army veteran of World War II. George was the, in the construction business and survived by his daughter Shannon. John Jones was 46 years old. He was a baseball coach for Dyton Youth Baseball and a strong supporter of the Dyton Youth Softball League and the Segregated Country Club. Also, Joseph Almeida, a resident of North Dyton and a veteran of the Army of Portugal. He owned his own contractor business in town and was a member of St. Nicholas Admirer Church. We ask for a moment of silence on their behalf.
Thank you. Thank you. So, May is Mental Health Awareness Month and the Board of Selectmen have a proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas one in five U.S. adults experience mental health issues each year, but less than half get treatment, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has had a profound impact on the mental health of people of all ages, whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas now, more than ever, it is critical to reduce the stigma around mental health struggles that commonly prevent individuals from seeking help, and whereas recognizing the early warning signs of mental health needs and obtaining the necessary support, assistance, and treatment gives individuals better opportunities to lead full and productive lives at home, in schools, and in the communities, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare providers, organizations, citizens share the burden of mental health problems and has the responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. And now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Signed by the Chairman Ken Pacheco, Leonard Hull, who is our clerk, and Dr. Brett Sografas as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Do we need to take a vote on this proclamation or we? I would ask for a motion to accept the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the proclamation and declare the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the Town of Dyton.
I second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Selectmen Hull?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Z?
Kim Pacheco votes aye. Scheduled appointments, we have, uh, I've got some concerns about the, some calls regarding concerns about Pleasant Street. As you know, we voted it to be a safety zone at the, uh, be 20 miles per hour, so I've invited Tom Ferry, our Highway Superintendent, to come to this meeting to give us some, uh, important discussion on what's going on on Pleasant Street. So, Mr. Ferry?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Would you please give us an update on Pleasant Street?
Yes, as you know, a lot of work has been done previously. Uh, where we are right now is in part of that packet that Sherbit did with all the study we had, the town is responsible for modifying their municipal traffic code to reflect the locations of all safety zones prior to posting any signage. That's one of the last steps. And along with that, I, I believe that that's the meat and potatoes that, uh, stands behind a ticket if a ticket's written, so it's not, uh, cannot be challenged in court. Uh, as far as I know, we don't have an actual municipal traffic code yet. Um, I believe they're referring to the, on our level, the local bylaw, the town's bylaw, so we need to rewrite that. Our last time we had the discussion, your meeting, um, we were just entering the budget process and we're just wrapping that up so we could start entertaining, creating that bylaw and reviewing that and prepare something for the fall meeting. I believe that was the last, uh, the last, uh, plan we had at that time, so we could do that due diligence to the bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry. Does the board have any questions?
I did have a question, and I'm not sure if it's for, um, Mr. Ferry or Town Administrator Mullen. Um, but in, um, I just want to phrase this properly the first time. So, in towns and cities where they have safety zones?
Yes.
Are we assuming that unlike Pleasant Street, which already has, so I think the issue is obviously that Pleasant Street already had posted speed limit signs, and so that's why we're talking about, um, possibly needing a bylaw in order to, um, solidify tickets, um, when they go through the court system?
Yes.
But in towns like Randolph that already have safety zones, do they not have to do that because they didn't have a posted speed limit there first? Like, did we ever look into what other towns and cities are doing that don't have bylaws but have safety zones?
Yes, we am. Dr. Z, and what, um, over the last few weeks, I've talked to, uh, the town administrators and managers in the towns of Randolph, East Bridgewater, and Milton. And, um, the, there's a distinction between, uh, the speed safety zone, uh, like in what is actually, I believe in, I want to, there's a local option also outlined, I want to say, um, in Section 6 of Chapter 90 as well, which actually allows, um, a town to reduce their speed limit to 25 miles an hour. Um, uh, we, so, that, that local option law took effect in 2016. The speeds, safety zone, local option took effect, as I understand, in around 2018. Uh, like as of right now, Randolph has adopted the former. So, they have adopted a, um, actually a townwide, um, oh, you know, speed zone of 25 miles an hour. Um, and, uh, the difference with Randolph is they still had a bylaw, uh, actually in the form of an ordinance, because their town has a town council, so they essentially have town meetings every other week.
Okay.
Which allows for a quicker process. Uh, but I do have, I do have templates in the form of a bylaw from the towns of East Bridgewater and Milton, which have adopted not these speed safety zones to 20 miles an hour, but to 25 miles an hour, uh, either all in the whole town or like in distinct areas of the town. So, going forward to the point that Mr. Ferry had mentioned, uh, we actually have a template to start with.
Thanks.
Um, in preparing our work for the special town meeting in the fall.
Okay. And what happens if the bylaw doesn't pass at the town meeting?
Then we have really no enforcement teeth. So, in my opinion, we could have, uh, on paper, uh, we could have a, a safety zone in place, but, uh, the police department really wouldn't have, uh, any enforcement, uh, teeth or backup in order, they could issue all the tickets they wanted, uh, but if they were appealed, oh, you know, oh, you know, there wouldn't be anything really backing any tickets up. So, that's really why, in my opinion, we need a bylaw. That would really provide the necessary due diligence and backup that we need.
And the only reason I ask those questions is because at the last meeting, as you know, Selectmen Goulart had raised a concern about the need for, um, I, probably not using the right phrasing, but like a school safety zone. Um, and I think that if we're going to consider something like that, this board at least, then I think we should at least try to get the first safety zone squared away and bring it to town meeting and see how the public feels about safety zones in general. Um, so, those are my thoughts on that. Thank you.
So, would we have to have a public hearing if we are going to have a bylaw change, uh, bylaw addition, I guess it would be?
For the bylaw, one, for a new bylaw for, uh, the special town meeting, one could argue that there's already been a hearing that took place, uh, just to really make sure we do our due diligence. I don't think it would hurt, uh, in advance of the special town meeting in the fall, once we have official bylaw language, to have an additional public hearing.
I think, uh,
I think I would like that.
Yeah. I think that's good. Like, for example, when we did, um, when we did the Stretch Energy Code and the, uh, Right to Farm bylaw, we didn't, I don't think we needed to have those, um, public hearings, but I think it was good. People did come and they, you got tough questions.
Yeah.
But it was, it was a nice place to be able to answer those questions before you got to the town meeting. Um, so, I think what you're saying, Town Administrator, is it's not necessary, but it's probably good practice.
Very good, yeah. Yes, I would support it.
Mr. McYon, Chief has a question.
Can I call on that? Yes, Chief.
So, we put the radar sign down there last Friday, the new one we have, and this radar sign picks up, um, the speeds of the vehicle going both ways. It tells how many cars have traveled that road, um, on Pleasant Street. So, we put that sign out there on Friday, and a number of cars have gone through there. There's been 2,300 cars traveling on the road since Friday.
Wow.
That's quite a bit. So, what this radar sign does, it, it, it gets you, gives you a pie, speeds, uh, sign, pie, of the speeds of all the vehicles. So, looking at this pie, um, so small, it's 79% of the vehicles were below the speed limit. So, we have that set at 40 because basically the speed is, right now is 40 miles an hour. So, 79% was below 40. The, uh, moderate above speed was 28.8. And then the vehicles going over the speed limit was only like 0.2%. So, looking at that, it looks like cars aren't really going over the speed limit, maybe because the sign's there and they're obeying, they're in the sign right now. But we're going to keep that down there. We're going to see what, what the, if it changes or what happens over there. Um, I plan on doing some type of, I don't want to say it's, uh, speed control, but put some guys in different areas of the town. I know we're still getting a lot of complaints of cars everywhere, and I, I know that it's not just Pleasant Street, it's Forest Street, and we've had this discussion before, excuse me, Main Street, William Street. So, we're going to try to get some officers out there, stop monitoring the traffic, see if we can, you know, try to set something here to try to slow this down, because summer is getting here now. We got people walking.
Exactly.
We got people riding bikes. That Pleasant Street is so busy down there in the summertime. You know, people putting their boats in the water. So, we need to, um, we'll step it up a little bit and we're going to try to slow down.
What was the percentage again that was over the speed limit? Was it 0.02?
Uh, 0.2% vehicles were over the speed limit.
Just for the record, I did not drive on Pleasant Street since, uh, last Friday. Any questions from any board members?
I do have one question before you go, Chief. Um, well, actually, you're still on the agenda, but, um, do you think that that's because of the word about the safety zone? And perhaps people think that Pleasant Street is being monitored more closely, or do you think it was just the presence of the radar?
It could be both, but I think it's presence of the sign, the radar trailer being there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm sure it slows them down. We placed it just, uh, right around Hart Street and Pleasant Street, just beyond that, going towards Somerset. So, we're going to leave it there for a little bit and then, uh, we'll move it around town. But we're gonna, like I told you, I'm going to try to get some, uh, patrols up there and start slowing these people down and prevent this speeding around town.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's still going on. People doing, you know, and do the best that we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since you're the next agenda item, if we're all done with Pleasant Street, uh, Chief, you can stay right there.
I put my glasses on.
And can, can we clarify one thing before we move on though?
Sure.
The vote that we took, and I know you weren't here, it was the former Town Administrator, um, but the vote that we took was not just Pleasant Street, it was also Pleasant Street and the other streets that we had delineated at that time on the map. So, it wasn't just one street.
Correct.
So, I just want to make that clear because that issue has been raised.
Somerset, yeah, Haven, part of Somerset, I should say, Somerset, Haven.
Thank you.
Chief?
Okay. Um, I'm here tonight looking to fill some vacancies on the police department. We have some, two slots there that are, are open. Sergeant Cronin is here. He is my training officer, IT, court officer, so that's quite a bit, and I appreciate that. So, a couple of months ago, we, we set a, a, um, test up. We had about, I believe, 38 to 40, Sarge? Is that, is that the right number?
37.
37, okay. Um, we had 37 people come out. It was administered by Chief Sampson, who does that for us. Um, we had it at Bristol Aggie. Out of the 37 that we had, that was a, a low number, because we've done this in the past and we've had over 100 people come and take an exam, and this was really low. And, and I know that area towns, cities, towns are really having trouble getting people now. So, we took the test. After the test was done, we received the results, um, on the people. Myself and Sergeant Cronin went through, looking at the tests and scores. There were some high numbers, high scores. There were some in the middle and there were some low ones. So, we went through them all. After we did that, we ended up, um, having interviews. We thought who we thought the best were people to interview, and I think we had six, I believe, out of that, that 37. And the six that we interviewed were very good. They were, they were really all did a nice job in an interview. Um, interviews were done by myself, Sergeant Cronin, and Todd Szuski, Patrolman Todd Szuski, who was fantastic in the interview. He was really good. Uh, so, we asked various questions about, you know, about their, their, their police work, if they've ever been into police work, if they ever, you know, worked in another town, if they, if they, they were interested in other towns or cities. So, things like that we asked for. Um, so, after we were done with the interviews, we sat, us three, went over what we thought was really good. Um, like I said, all six were very good. If I could take all six, I would, but we couldn't do that right now. So, we came up with, with three good ones right now. Um, I'm looking to fill the vacancy with two full-timers, and then I look, I'm looking to fill one with a reserve. So, I, I'd like to recommend on the, the full-time, I'd like to recommend Stephen Hathaway. And I don't know if you guys, I gave a packet, and I don't know if you saw the, the applications and the names and, and some, some, uh, letters that we wrote. So, if you guys had viewed them, I, I thank you. So, Stephen Hathaway was one that we, we felt that was, um, a full-time member. And then we looked at a female, uh, her name is, oh, see if I'm saying this right, Nume Washburn?
Nimbleway.
Nimbleway, thank you. So, those two right there that we felt that were good candidates, they did, you know, they were excellent. Um, I'd like to make the, a recommendation that they, uh, get appointed on a, um, constitutional appointment, meaning they have to go through a PAT test, they have to go through a psych test, and they have to go through a physical. So, that's what I'm looking at. I'm not looking, we point them tonight, but they need to pass all this before they move on. So, we, we need that, to do that. Um, on the reserve?
I have a question. So, are you asking for, I'm sorry, it's directly related. Are you asking for a conditional appointment?
Conditional appointment, that's what we're looking at. Yep. Right now, because we, we want them to go through these, this, three things that they have to do before they even
Thank you.
go further. And then, um, those two I'm looking to recommend, and then I'd like to recommend a reserve. Uh, her name is Julie Horton. That she would have to do the same thing. She would have to go through a, a, same as those other two would have to do. So, those three, I'm, I'm looking right now to, um, do this.
I had the opportunity to look at the applications and the resumes, and I, I think you picked three, uh, excellent candidates, uh, for your department. I want to thank Sergeant Cronin for his participation in the interviewing and yourself, Chief. Uh, but I do think that we've got some good candidates, and I would hope that, uh, the board would, uh, adopt your recommendation.
Okay. So, so Stephen Hathaway won't have to attend a, a full-time police academy. He's just going to be transferring from another department. So, he is good to go once he does everything of those three things he has to do. The girl is, um, has to attend academy. Uh, let me just get that information first. Now, I don't know if you saw in that packet that, in that packet, there's academies that, there's the Plymouth Academy and there's the Randolph Academy, if I'm saying error. Let me get the shot. Yeah. So, Plymouth would start September 20th, this upcoming year, and then the Randolph would be November 1st. We're going to get her, we want to get her into the September one.
Okay.
So, so, that's what we're looking at for her. Mr. Hathaway's good. Um, the Julie Horton girl is a reserve. She would have to do all those, and then she would come, uh, here and do her training. Sergeant Cronin, like I said, is head of training, but he has two, Trooman Steele and Trooman Ferreira, that do the, who will be doing the training for her. So, there's some things she's going to have to do. So, my recommendation is if I can appoint, um, conditional employment right now with these three, after they complete their, they're called, I'll call it training and what they have to do, um, that's what I'm looking for.
So, I have a general question. Uh, the police academy, does the town pay for that? Are we?
The town will have to pay for, for, um, the, the girl, Washburn girl that will be attending, yes.
And if they were to leave after they attended academy, do they have a responsibility to pay for that, or is it, is they?
If they leave, I don't think the town has anything like that right now.
We should consider it, but obviously not at this point, but.
I know, yeah, I know what you're saying on that one.
Because I've seen they go through the academy, what town pays for it, and then like six months, a year later, they're going to another town. But that's out of your hands, so.
But the girl, the, the reserve, the one I make the reserve, she's already got Reserve Academy, so she's good.
But we will save on the first candidate, correct?
Yes. Mr. Hathaway, we won't have to.
He's still got some conditions he has to.
Some things he has to pass, and then he, uh, is good to go.
Does the board have any questions?
And he has worked, he was a reserve in this department at one time.
Yeah.
And he had left to go move on to, you know, to a full-time job, and now he wants to come back.
I do have a question, and maybe this is unrelated, but is this the Steve, did Stephen Hathaway go to Dyton Rahoboth High School?
I'm sorry?
Okay, so it is, okay. The name sounded familiar. It was friendly with him. Okay. Great.
Selectmen Hull?
Mr. Chairman, after having reviewed the transcripts, uh, resumes of Stephen Hathaway and Nemu Washburn, I'd like to make a recommend, uh, a motion to appoint as full-time police officers Stephen J. Hathaway and Nemu A. Washburn.
With a condition that they complete?
They complete the.
Conditional appointment.
Yes.
Mrs. Brady, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Yep, I will second that.
Any further discussion?
No, I, I think you did a great job. Um, I think that the fact that there are, it seems to be less interest in applying, unfortunately, for, uh, full-time officer positions at the time, that you were still able to find six candidates is good. Um, I think that's promising, um, and I'm happy to support this.
Were you going to say something? I know that.
Sergeant?
Actually, nothing. Any questions from the, you know, process or the candidates or anything that's going to be, has hap, has happened or is going to be happening in the future, but, um.
Sergeant, you want to explain, yeah, just explain how, what the process you've been doing. I mean, you've, you've put a lot of work into this, so.
Yeah, I think just to kind of continue on what Dr. Z was saying, it's really challenging right now, the law enforcement to recruit. Um, so, the fact that we had 37 and we were able to get, uh, the six really qualified, I, I, I thought, to, uh, to move forward in the process, we were lucky. We were lucky for that, I have the opportunity to speak to a lot of area departments during the week, and they're hurt. There's a lot of places that are, they're hurting for candidates, and for a lot of reasons, we could be here all night talking about it, but. I think we're fortunate enough to, to be able to have the opportunity to get these officers going and join our ranks.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons is that people are assuming that if they get into a, become a police officer, they're worried about what could happen to them because of the climate. However, if you're a good cop, you got nothing to worry about, quite frankly, and if you're a bad cop, you ought to go. And if you're a good cop, and you see a bad cop doing something bad, then the good cop needs to address that, and not allow it to happen. But I do understand some reservation, pandemic has something to do with it too, because as you guys know, you're out there, when I'm sitting home, because of COVID, you guys are out there working with the public all the time, so that is appreciated.
May I ask one last question? I'm sorry.
One last question, when he says that, just so you know, there's two more follow-up questions.
Sergeant Cronin, so for the four good people who just are not being offered a role on the Dayton Police Department, do we keep them in mind in case, like, a position opens up next year, or if another position is funded, and there's a new vacancy? Do we keep in touch with them, how does that work?
So there's a couple of different things that happen there, the first dynamic is to answer your question, yes. We'll keep their file typically for two years, however, in this process, it does not necessarily mean that they didn't go on to the next step, but during the background check, something kicked up. So that is the other dynamic in here too, is that we do a full background check through Detective Richards. And if something does kick up that is questionable, or is, is a disqualifier, they're put off. So, out of the six that we have, I would love to add, every single one move on to the final step, for one reason or another, they didn't.
I'm glad you brought that up to you guys about background checks, I forgot to mention that, thank you. That, yeah, Detective Richards, we do a complete background check, and we make sure that everything is good with them. So thank you for bringing that up, I forgot about that.
Yeah, you do a carry check, and I, I think you check for restraining orders, domestic violence.
We do all that, he, he, he checks with, with, if they, where they worked before, or, or neighbors, or, or if they got on their application, you know, friends or whatever, we just make sure that, and Ryan does a good job, job of that too, he's, he's good at that, he started with that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for all the work that you've done. Ask for a vote, Selectmen Hall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye on these two candidates. And the reserve officer Julie. Is it Julie or Julia? I can't.
I call it Julie.
Julia, aye.
Mr. Chairman, if you're entertaining motions.
Yes.
I make a motion that we appoint Julia Horton of One Standish Avenue, Whitman, Mass, as a reserve police officer. Side note, this doesn't need to be conditional, because she completed the Reserve Academy?
There's, there's other conditions though, right?
It's the same conditions that are the full-time officer, they still need to go through the initial high physical, the PAT, it's like, same exact criteria as far as passing.
Conditional upon those criteria.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll take a vote, Selectmen Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Z, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Campuchico votes aye. So, congratulations, you've got two new people coming, and a reserve officer.
I thank the board for, for this, and I think Sarge wants to just go over a little bit reserves.
Sure.
Because things could change down the road because of reform and all this stuff, so I think he, maybe he can fill you in a little bit about this, so you have some, you know, aware of a little bit about it.
Yeah, so we were lucky to actually have a candidate that was looking to be a reserve officer. That role is being phased out by the state. There are some, there's a lot of language. So they are gonna remain certified if they graduated from the academy prior to the year twenty-two. So anybody that graduates a Reserve Academy prior to December thirty-one of this year, they'll have certification. Based on the letter of their last name is when their certification needs to be reapplied for. So, we're very fortunate to have the ability to get a quality reserve officer on prior to the change, because, again, that whole role is, is being phased out and dissolved by the MPTC.
Selectmen Hall.
Sergeant Cronin. They're going to do away with the reserve officers, but could the town still hire part-time officers?
No, so, it's, it's gonna sound convoluted, but it's very clear to me, because it consumes me. What's gonna happen is anybody that has that reserve certification, they'll keep it as long as they do a BRIDGE program, the two-hundred-hour BRIDGE program, that the state's gonna offer starting next month. Once they do that program, they are now considered full-time certified. So their status, according to the state, will change from an intermittent to a full-time officer. That does not mean that Dayton's gonna retain them, in my opinion, anyway. Dayton's gonna retain them as a quote, "full-time officer." I think language would have to be explored, you know, maybe called per diems. But there are some implications on our side budget-wise, and, and other things that we need to kind of look forward on going down the road, because we're not gonna have that part-timer anymore.
I had a question about that too, and it's sort of piggybacking, I'm sorry. Piggybacking off of Selectmen Hall's question. A lot of our full-time officers at DPD were former reserve officers, either here or in neighboring towns, and so, and you don't have to answer this now, but I'm curious to see how something like that would impact the department, and future recruiting of, like, full-time officers.
Yeah, so it's a great, great point, we're very fortunate that a large percentage of us down there came from the reserve ranks. And I think as the chief, it's a benefit and advantage to have to, to develop and to work with, and you know exactly what you're getting. So that advantage, you know, I don't want to say it's gonna be lost, but it's, it's gonna be a new challenge. It's, it's more towards how civil service hires, just based on testing, and pulling them in, and doing a full background check, where we have the advantage to know what we're getting. So going forward, I think that it is gonna be tough, it is gonna be tough, but, you know, if, like, Selectman Chico said, you have, you have good cops and you have bad cops. As long as you vet out the, anything that's gonna tarnish you, then you're gonna be okay.
Thank you.
We do have a good group down there, though.
Absolutely.
They do a good job, they do what they're supposed to do, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, absolutely. And if you, down the road, if you want to have a broader conversation with the chairman or the board about that, I'm, I'm all ears.
Sure.
Yeah, we've, we've actually had that discussion, I think, post-stud, I think that's gonna be the opportunity to sit down and talk about a lot of different things with reform, that will definitely have direct effect on us.
I, I was impressed with some of the education that the candidates had, and specifically Stephen Hathaway having attended CCI-T, the runner program in Totten. The probation department has evolved in that, and they train how to deal with people with mental illness, this happens to be Mental Illness, Mental Health Month. So that, that's very helpful, I think, and in the past, you've had people on your staff that had to deal with it, and they've done a great job.
Yeah. Sometimes coming aboard.
Yeah, so, I was, I was having, it wasn't the Totten program he went to, but I was impressed that he went to the CCI-T and got that certificate. It's a difficult, not difficult, but it's, it's, you, we used to, when I went through that training, we put headphones, phones on, you hear voices, and you go in the mall, and they tell you buy a newspaper, and in the meantime, somebody's telling you something.
Yeah.
So it's good that police officers get to hear, see what's going on, as far as mental health, and know how to handle it better, so.
Definitely.
That's good that that's, you picked that candidate. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Well, congratulations.
Oh, thank you, board.
To more people in your department, and.
Mrs. Brady, did we take a vote on that? I just want to make sure before we move on, okay, thank you.
And you're gonna dedicate some of your staff, new staff, to patrol on the streets for speeding.
Yeah, after they, they complete all this, we can maybe have them come up and, you know, we can do something then, like we generally do, that'll be good.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Chief, thank you.
Moving right along, scheduled appointments, we have Joslyn Tavarez, our director of Dayton Public Library, and she's gonna talk about the reopening, or the possible reopening of the library, or giving us some information on that.
Hello, Mrs. Tavarez, nice to see you. Even half your face.
She's smiling behind her.
I know she is.
Okay, where do you want me to start? Last we met, you recall our sharing of concerns about the closure of a public library would affect our certification, which would impact Dayton residents' ability to use other public libraries, and for us to have resource sharing and bring in other library materials for our patrons to use, as well as impact our state aid, you know, which is just recently starting to go up after years and years and years of not. And, so we talked about that, and I guess I kind of put you on notice that we're, you know, we're gonna need help, because as long as we're in COVID, we're, we're okay. A lot of us are in, you know, operating with curbside, and we're okay. Now that we're slowly coming out of curbside operations, and the governor is opening up the state, we're, we're watching for signs from the Mass Border Library Commissioners that we will need to be open. And my first clue that that is happening is my attendance at a meeting, that there was mention of the possibility that the commissioners will require Massachusetts libraries to be open with their pre-COVID hours by Labor Day. So I called Mike right away, Mr. Mullin right away, to let him know of the situation. I spoke to my trustees individually to let them know this was coming, and we convened a few meetings to just, you know, figure out, I know we have the, you know, special town meeting funds that were allocated to make some repairs to the building to allow us to open the doors. Those will probably not be done in time for Labor Day, but it's just going to have us lose more space in the building. So we're, we're really at a, a big crossroads here. So I, I just, I wanted to appeal to you for some guidance. I've been talking with Mr. Mullin quite a bit, and I don't know if you want to add anything, did I miss anything? Is there anything I should say?
So, no, and I want to thank you, Joslyn, and the trustees, you know, like, for really, you know, staying on top of this issue. Going back to when I was hired, you know, I think actually the former chairman, Dr. Z, right when I was hired, he, he told me that this whole issue, getting the accessibility and the special town meeting funds actually utilized, and that project are complete, that was gonna be one of my first priorities, and, like, and we are working on that. But as it relates to the notice, you know, or the direction where we think the Mass Border Library Commissioners are going to go, we have a little bit of time, and in my opinion, we have a few options. Number one, and it's an option that I was hoping to have explored by now, but I actually expect to actually put something together to reach out to the Executive Office of Administration Finance tomorrow, is, like, a lot of the challenges that we have faced at the library have also been brought on by COVID, in the pandemic. So I want to explore with A and F, whether through our CARES Act allotment, we have any ability to, you know, to help address, like, our funding for spacing issue that we have there now at the library, and how it could help us meet the Labor Day deadline. And that could, and I want to be realistic about that, because that also depends on two very important contingencies. Number one is obviously the state agreeing with our approach, but number two, you know, the practical, the practicality of actually getting a CARES Act funds related supplement, you know, and deal with the issues that we have at the library now, would allow, basically, in my view, the ability for the town to vacate the building, and to deal with the construction that we are going to be performing there, for the ramp, which is envisioned to come behind the back of the library and into the middle, and then the accessible restroom, which is, like, as envisioned, is going to take up Joslyn's office as it stands now. And that also, based on accessibility, that also means that the children's room in the basement won't be able to be utilized based on safe, public safety and accessibility issues as well. So, like, it gives us really the ability for that construction to happen, and the potential for, like, a redesign of just the first floor alone to be considered, like, in, like, in the funding of a short-term, actually leased space. But I also want to be practical in as much that there could be a build-out for that leased space, and the timing might actually just not work in that aspect as well.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Wait, Dr. Z.
On the second, on the second, actually, I think, like, immediate thing that we're planning on doing, actually through the help of Mr. Aguilar, while we're working on the, our engineering and the scope of the bid for the construction of the ramp and the accessible restroom, like, we also, the, the Building Needs Committee has called a meeting Tuesday, I believe in the afternoon, like, where this issue is gonna be front and center. So the, so the Building Needs Committee will be considering this, like, and really begin to compile an inventory of other building issues, like, as it relates to coming up with a plan going forward. So that could be helpful in looking at all of our options here, and exploring, like, in the short, you know, long term, how we can really plan out, and dealing with this issue to meet our accreditation, our, you know, needs and future needs for the library as well, and this would be actually done in conjunction with Mr. Tavarez and the library trustees. And the other option we have as well, and I was really happy to hear, like, actually Mr. Woods's comments last week during the Fincum meeting, like, is the ability to actually explore additional CPC funds for the building to help deal with these issues as well. So, so long story short, you know, I mean, we knew this conversation was going to come. Like, you know, we have really, you know, I mean, a, a very tight timeline, but a practical enough timeline, I think, to come up with a plan. Though that plan is daunting, and though the answers or the solutions aren't, in many cases, oh, you know, they. many cases, oh, you know, they may not be the best solutions, but we need to consider everything at this point.
So what is the status of the renovations?
The, um, the Building Commissioner and I are working on getting a scope up for the engineering, uh, so the ramp, uh, so we can engage an engineer to construct the ramp, um, and then at this, then at the same time, that engineer, uh, will be able to look at the interior design of the, of the first floor to see how we might be able to reconfigure the first floor to basically being, bring the children's, uh, you know, library up, uh, like in, have some, uh, you know, some more than not ideal, some, uh, actually more shared services arrangement between the adult, uh, and the children's library just on the first floor alone. So...
If those renovations happen, we think that there'll be, I know it's not enough space, but we'd be able to open up and be able to take care of the children as well as adults' use of the library?
We would.
I know we're losing space.
We would have to do the best we could. If that was the only option, we would have to do the best we could. It wouldn't allow for much browsing, but we would, I, I could get some help with, the MBLC has building consultants that could help us with some kind of layout options that would help us position things the best way we could. I, I mean, it would be a drastic change from what, everything we know.
In post-COVID, you could actually use this building
Right.
for children programs.
Right.
Because I, I know you've, you've run a lot of children programs and you're not able to do it now. You probably won't be able to do it once the renovations happen, but you can utilize, uh, this building here. Uh, Dr. Z, I know you had a question.
Thank you, sir. Um, my question is mostly what I've heard, um, when you were discussing Town Administrator is a lot of your discussion was around the funding. We already have the funds. My concern is that we still, we don't, we're not, I don't want to say this.
Nope.
I'm not, does, I don't mean it in the way I'm saying it, but, but like nothing tangible is being done. We're still in the phase of like talking about it. And so that's my concern. My concern is the timing, not so much the funding. That's great that we might get CPC funds. That's great that the Municipal Building Study Committee is reconvening and that's great that we may be able to use CARES Act funds, but the timing is the problem, not the funding. So my concern is how do we get the ball rolling quicker than, than what's going on right now?
I, I wholeheartedly agree. Um, the scope, uh, like to get everything out to bid, uh, actually is being worked on as we speak by the Building Commissioner and I. Uh, he actually sent me a draft today's Wednesday, Monday. Um, I'm hoping to get back to him on that tomorrow so we can get that out and really get this rolling.
And, and I didn't mean that direct, I'm sorry. I, I didn't mean that directly.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I hear you completely.
I guess my concern is that if we go back to when the funding was actually approved to now, it's been almost a year. Not, it's not, has not been a year, but it's been almost, yeah.
Yeah, six months.
So it's been half a year. Um, that's concerning to me.
Yes.
Um, and I'm happy to help anyway, and I know you are very involved with the Board of Trustees, but anything that this board can do, I think we're all in agreement. We're happy to help, so.
Would the ADA coordinator be involved in this at all in the, the ramp and making sure the bathrooms are?
Uh, yes, we need to get, uh, actually like an engineer in first and then once we do, yes.
Thank you. Selectman Hull?
When I first heard about this issue was March, and after speaking with the fire chief, I was deeply concerned. And what I'm hearing tonight has me even more concerned.
I'm sorry.
We have a problem and we have a deadline.
Yep.
I'm wondering if we should not make this a priority and that a task force be established to develop a timeline and an implementation plan to meet that September deadline and that a committee be put together that can dedicate their time to make this happen. I've heard many options, but what also can, concerns me is that there is a lot of rumor out there. And one of the things that a task force would do, they would report back to us, public meetings, so everyone would, there'd be transparency. Everyone would know where we're at and where we're going.
And I will support that as long as the Building Commissioner is involved and on that task force along with the ADA coordinator.
This is Jonathan. Am I allowed to chime in for a minute or a little bit?
Uh, I have a policy that, uh, no public input until we have public input. So your name was mentioned, or well, your title was mentioned, so I'm gonna allow you to speak, Mr. Gale.
The only thing I was gonna say is that I think as much as everyone is talking about what they want to do with the ramp, restrooms, et cetera, right now, what I think everyone needs to think about as well, because this is a public building, there are specific formulas that are required by the Commonwealth when you are renovating a public building. And those formulas in terms of the, basically there are three aspects to it. One is the value of the building versus the land. The second is the, the overall value of the property. The third is the type and age, well, it's more than three really, the type and age of the building. And the fourth is, the fourth is the actual cost of the renovation. And if the renovation that's being done are over certain percentages of the value that I just mentioned for that building, then the renovations that might be proposed might not be appropriate for that building and might not allow the state to approve the ADA. And I'm saying that because I think it's important for the ADA considerations to be looked at early on when you're looking at the potential costs as part of the study factor, because there are, as I said, all those things have to be factored in to whether or not those renovations, while they seem appropriate, may not be appropriate.
That's why I've asked for your involvement in it. I think we need the engineering work to be done so we know exactly what the plan is and then, uh, the ADA coordinator should get involved in it and determine whether or not, uh, we should go forward. Selectman Hull?
Would it be unreasonable to give permission for Mr. Mullen to form a task force and report back to us at the next meeting as the formation of that committee?
Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, on that note, um, the, last Tuesday, we brought together an internal, uh, group of, a group of department heads that include, that included myself, Mr. Vares, uh, the health agent, uh, the Building Commissioner, and the, the fire chief. I think that was it, right?
Yes. And, um, did you say the town accountant?
Uh, yes, and the town accountant for the financial stuff. Um, what we agreed at that time, uh, was immediately, uh, actually calling a meeting, um, uh, of the Building Needs Committee, really to guide this process along. Um, those meetings are posted, those meetings are public. Uh, so like we all and I can report, uh, actually back on those, uh, actually meetings, but the composition, uh, of that committee does include, uh, like actually department heads and at least one resident. Um, oh, you know, uh, like and then we would engage, uh, with the library director, uh, with the trustees as well and like report back. So, uh, actually like if we could use the Building Needs Committee, uh, actually as the vehicle that you're envisioning, Mr. Hull, and I can report back, uh, like from, on actually their meetings and I'll make sure that the Building Needs Committee, uh, uh, you know, actually establishes a timeline and a punch list in terms of a plan to get there at our meeting on Tuesday.
Selectman Hull?
Mr. Pacheco, I definitely would like to see Mr. Gales be a part of this discussion. Um, could we put this on as a regular agenda item so we can get updates?
You're meeting next week with the Building Committee, uh, so on May 26th, if you could report back to us and give us, uh, an update?
Absolutely.
Because the beauty of the update is that it also goes out to the public and they're hearing one voice.
And I, I did just want to add that, um, the, though the Building Needs, it's actually called the Municipal Building Study Committee because they study more than the library.
Yep.
Um, however, I do agree this should be a priority because we're up against a deadline. Um, and we certainly all, I think, agree that we can't have the library be decertified or closed or any of that. Um, however, the, the Municipal Building Study Committee was just formed. I had to serve on it before we hired Town Administrator Mullen and we were only able to have one meeting and I think the last meeting was in February. Um, so I think if you, if your idea is to use that as the vehicle, I guess my question is, are you okay with that as long as, um, they report regularly and they provide that information that you asked for? The, the edul and all that?
I see a task force as having one, you know, a representative go to their meetings, but they can have their own meetings and then they bring it back to the task force. It includes everyone.
Mm-hmm.
But the thing is, you know, the last time they met was February.
Mm-hmm.
It's May.
Mm-hmm.
We gotta keep this moving.
Absolutely.
This issue just came up. It's my understanding.
The deadline came to my attention like a week or so ago, yeah. Um, may I just make a comment, Mr. Chairman? Um, I appreciate the ADA guidelines for a building that size and that age. That's still not gonna help the operations of the public building with the function of a library. And I, it, I'm not allowed to open that building for what its use is in that space. So if the engineering report comes back and Mr. Gale says that, you know, if, if the things come down, if it comes down to it and it's not feasible to use that space, then we, 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 we still have a big problem. So I just want to point that out and be mindful of that.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen?
So yes, and I complete, I complete, I completely agree with what the library director is saying. Uh, like actually like in my view, uh, like I think we should approach actually two issues on a parallel track. Uh, one, we have the hundred and five thousand dollars that was appropriated at town meeting, uh, that we have to, uh, like for lack of a better word, uh, like actually really move on and make sure we deal with that and complete that project. However, uh, based on the operational and space needs at the library, uh, uh, oh, you know, like and together with the Municipal Building Study Committee, sorry, I got that right this time, but, uh, we need to evaluate how the library may fit, uh, like in where, how the library may fit, uh, or actually not fit in its existing building, uh, like with or without the, uh, the accessibility improvements that we're making to the building anyways, because the building at the end of the day is a town building, uh, and we want to actually keep up with the building and maintain it. So there are really two separate issues here to deal with, uh, that I think we need to be ready to deal with both on a very parallel, uh, uh, maybe intertwined track, but also maybe separate track. Uh, and we, I think all need to be very, uh, like wide-eyed about the realities of both and have regular updates, um, as, uh, 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 as to where we are in assessing, uh, how those two parallel tracks are either intersecting, uh, or they're not going to be converging at all, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just want to go on, and I've said this in the past and I'll go on record again. I think Dyton deserves a new library. We're, we're putting a Band-Aid on a bad situation. I get it, that's a town building and it will be used in the future, so we need to make these, uh, changes now, but it doesn't fit the needs for the townspeople. And we have to look at that. I know there's a plan, uh, to add on to the building, which I'm not in favor of. I think Dyton deserves a new library, uh, and we're on that list. I don't know what we're, number we're on that list, but...
We've jumped up to 12.
I know if it comes before the town, it's probably not gonna pass.
I know. It's, we still need to decide on if that's a viable plan or not. I, I understand.
Yeah, no, I don't think it is a viable plan. I think we ought to be, um, looking towards the future and talk about building, a new building. We just, you know, a couple years ago, we just purchased a land next door to Town Hall and I, that would be the ideal spot as far as I'm concerned. And I actually think it would be cheaper than what's, uh, when we talk about the renovations. It's eight million dollars presently. The state's gonna give us four million. It's gonna cost the taxpayers four mil, four million. I think we can build a new, uh, library cheaper than the eight million dollars and it's the benefit of all the, the residents in town. Like, Mr. Hull, I saw your hand up.
Well, yes, I, Mr. Pacheco, I totally agree. The long-term goal is a new library. However, September is around the corner.
Yes.
And one of the things that I was...
You're saying we can't build a new library by then? No.
I was hoping as part of the task force that they would anticipate the problems they would have. And one of the problems we all know is while they're doing construction, what would be a good alternative site? And I, I think that should come from the task force, not from the Board of Selectment at this time.
Can I ask you a question? Or through the, through the chair? When you say that, do you mean they give us a recommendation and because it may or may not have a price tag, we decide? Or do you want the Municipal Building Study Committee to actually?
No, they're gonna make recommendations. Oh, yes.
I agree.
I mean, I believe that's how it works, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So, not trying to micromanage.
Oh, no, no.
I'm just saying, task force.
No, I love this.
Task force got a lot of work to do.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Like, and I also want to mention Mr. O'Connor is on the Zoom as well. Um, and actually earlier this afternoon, Mr. Vares and I, um, had a, oh, actually I, oh, actually had a Zoom conversation, uh, actually with Mr. O'Connor. Uh, so the trustees were looped into this conversation as well.
Uh, Mr. O'Connor, do you want to make any comments or?
Yeah, can, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the support I'm hearing for the short-term needs of the library and the long-term needs of the library, uh, among the, the selectmen. And, you know, you can count on, on my support as the, the trustees and, and the trustees to, you know, be engaged with the work of the task force and, and help to move this forward. Um, my schedule continues to be very tight, but, um, I'll make time when we, when we can. I wish I could be there in person. It was kind of hard to hear, but, um, what I heard was very positive and, and I, I feel very assured by, by that conversation I've heard this evening. And just know that you have my, you know, my full support. Um, it's not taken for granted, but to just state it here, uh, we will get this done. Uh, we, we've got wonderful library director, as you all know, and, uh, and we also have a great staff at the library who are doing their best in very difficult times. And our goal is to make things better for them and for the patrons and the residents of the town. So, thank you. I won't take any more time. I could keep talking for a long time about this, but I have a 7:15 meeting I need to get ready for, so, but thank you. Thank for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. We also have our newest, uh, trust library trustee here. I don't know if you want to make a comment, Mr. Ruchel?
No, I've talked to Jocelyn. I have some thoughts for later on, but we have a program right now.
Yep. Yes, thank you.
In, in discussion of people, the stakeholders, one group I didn't hear, uh, the capital outlay committee.
Mr. Rendan's on the committee and I believe he's on finance and capital outlay. Is that correct?
Yes, he's on the three. Yeah, the municipal building needs, finance.
And capital.
Yes, so it's all intertwining.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask one last question?
One last question, yes.
It's about ADA, I promise. It's about the ADA coordinator. Is the ADA coordinator on, I can't remember. Are they all, I thought they were also on the Municipal Building Study Committee? And if not, would that be possible to have them, so they're involved in the process from start to finish? And I don't know if my colleagues, um...
I totally support.
Okay.
I agree. I don't believe he's on it, or ADA coordinator, but he should be on it.
Could we change that?
There, there was a recommendation from the ADA coordinator to be on that, uh, committee, but I don't believe that committee had met and voted on that as yet.
Who would actually be voting? Would it be us voting to put him on? I would think.
Yeah, like, yeah, like the composition would come from us.
I think there was also a question as to whether the position would be a voting member or not based on the number of people who were on there.
Maybe we should do this next week.
So I, I think he should be invited to the meeting.
Yes, and then, yes.
And then just... And then just be put on the agenda for May 26.
Sure.
So we can decide, and they can decide whether he's a voting member or a laser person or whatever, but I think it's important. I think Dr. Z brought up a very good point, that he should be on that committee.
Sometimes I hit the nail on the head.
A lot of times I do. Is there anything else that we want to ask the director of the library?
I just want to thank you first and foremost, and I'll be very brief. I know this, and I say this to you every time I see you. I feel like we, it's like Groundhog Day with us, too. But I really appreciate your patience. I know this is not easy for you, and thank you for holding us accountable on this. And whatever you need, you know, I will be there. So I appreciate the open-door communication very much.
Thank you.
And I assume that Ms. Tavarez will be at that meeting Tuesday, or?
Yeah, yes, I'll send you the invite and
Yeah, I don't know your schedule or something.
I'll leave it here, yeah, but I'll send you the details.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you again for updating us on the situation.
I'm sorry, I know.
No.
No, thank you.
We, we need to hear this.
I know. Thank you.
We'll do whatever we can to help.
Yes. And Mr. Chairman, the Town Administrator will report every meeting on any progress?
It's going to be for the next meeting, we'll decide.
Okay.
You know, if they're not going to meet for a month, I think they ought to meet often, as I think you, you had mentioned, somebody had mentioned. But at least he's going, we'll come to the next meeting and we'll decide how often, when their next meeting is going to be, and then we'll decide when we should get another report.
Thank you.
But I do agree that it's very important that, given that we have a deadline, that we get regular updates on, on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is discretionary spending requests. There's a request from the Parks and Recreation Committee to have the playground fence repairs in the amount of $7,500, and we have the chairperson of the Parks and Recreation, Kevin Smith here.
Hello, sir.
So congratulations on your election and
Congratulations.
You seem to be doing a lot of good stuff, quite frankly.
Can I pass you guys on a little, just info on
Sure.
Just make it a little bit easier to understand.
Can we make sure Mrs. Brady gets a copy for the record?
Copy, I need it for my records. I'll go to you when I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's funny you say that. I was like, well, man, I should, I need one to look at myself.
Is that first one, is that the lane?
So the only, the pictures I have are actually from school lane. I didn't take, I, I didn't print out the pictures from Lane Field, but Lane Field is actually in worse condition than school lane. There's a, the boundary fence that kind of comes along the playground area and then cuts back to the corner of the ball field is just like absolutely destroyed, so that's actually in a lot worse to spare than, than this is. But this was just a little quick depiction of what the overall condition of the fences are at those two areas. It looks like, I had a conversation with Mr. Ferry from the Highway Department. There is a portion of those fences that were replaced about four years ago, but we're looking to replace the remaining sections, which are pretty badly worn. And also in that, it doesn't apply to Lane Field, but at school lane, we're also going to adjust the entry gates so that they're 36 inches wide, which will allow for ADA compliance once we start to work on pathways and things, and that's what we're kind of planning for the future with those items. I attached the quote that I received from Southeast Fence and Supply, and I also had shared this information with Town Administrator Mullen, so he's aware of this as well. I did receive one other quote from Mid-City Steel, but they were a little bit unresponsive in one half of the project. They had sent me some pricing for Lane, for Lane Field, but not for school lane. There was a lot of back and forth about what items were backordered and so on and so forth. This gentleman, John, from Southeast Fence, was like extremely helpful with answering questions I had and getting back to me quickly with, with the pricing. The pricing that he gave me ended up, the one project that I had to compare it to was $100 higher, but then I did a little research on the materials, and his materials, especially the piping, was of a better quality and thicker wall than what Mid-City was. It seems to me that Mid-City was almost like reselling Home Depot quality product, where this, this gentleman from Southeast Fence had a much superior product to offer. He did put it out with two options, and we're actually, so we, in our meeting Saturday, we had voted, we're going to use the nine, nine-gauge extruded fence, which is a little bit lighter than the original, the eight gauge that he put up top, but it's consistent with the other material that we already have in place. And they're not high, high-traffic areas where we don't have active, you know, athletic events going on there or anything like that, where I think damage is a concern, and it saves us a little bit of money. So the total cost of the materials for school lane was $3,325.09, and then Lane Field was $3,929. So altogether, it was $7,254. I was requesting that the amount be not to exceed $7,500, because we would like to, you know, essentially measure twice and cut a check once, and just make sure that we're have every, exactly what we need. Me and Mr. Ferry will revisit this one more time before we make the purchase, just in case there's something that we're missing. And then also, from a labor perspective, Mr. Ferry has agreed to help, help the Parks and Rec Commission by, one, removing the old fencing and disposing it, and also will be cleaning up the brush in those areas that have kind of overgrown into the existing fencing, and then the Highway Department will also be installing a new fence. We don't have a date at this time, but we wanted to get the purchase done, because the cost of pretty much any type of material, especially metals, seems to be climbing, so we'll try to be a little proactive and get it now before that, you know, gets, gets much higher.
I, I think this is a great start as far as fencing. I am in favor of putting a fence around the playground next door. I got, a resident contacted me, she has an autistic child, and she was concerned about the child being, running away from her as close to the road, so in the future, it's something for the Parks and Recreation to consider, is the possibility of a fence over there. But I think this is, this is great, and I will ask my colleagues on the board if they have any questions.
No, actually, Mr. Smith, what your committee has accomplished under your leadership since April 10th is very impressive. Actions speak louder than words, and for what I have seen thus far, you have my total support.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the $7,500 request for playground fence repairs for the Park and Recreation Committee.
Is there a second?
I'm going to second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I do have a compliment and a question. To Selectman Hall's point, I remember I first met you on Facebook, virtually, and you had created a Facebook group, and I remember, I forget how the conversation happened, but you asked me, you told me what was going on and your concerns, and I said, well, don't complain, contribute. And that's exactly what you did, so I really respect that.
Thank you very much.
And I really admire that, and anything you need from me on my end, I'm happy to help.
Well, and thank you for pushing me, because you're part of the reason I'm here. I had a little bit of a, I'll show you moment.
But my one question is, I, I guess I have two, but, and they're both related to the budget, but to the fence project, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman. Off the top of your head, I assume that you have enough money in the FY21 budget to purchase this?
Our budget was $23,100. Year-to-date, we have spent $30.15.
So my, I guess, suggestion to you would be, anything else that you think needs to be done before we close out the year? We have a couple of meetings left before June, July 1st, 2021, so I'm happy to entertain that, if the chairman's happy to put those things on the agenda.
And I did have that conversation with the Finance Committee a little bit, and I, I don't want to be like, I don't want to try to be, you know, go crazy and spend all of it in eight weeks, because I think that's unreasonable, and I don't, I want to do common-sense projects that make sense. I mean, there are a couple of other things that we've noticed that we might want to address, so I will definitely be back. And actually, one other thing as it pertains to this that we didn't visit, that myself and Mr. Ferry will have to have a conversation with, this could probably be some concrete that goes into this project, that we may or may not want to purchase. It's, that's going to be kind of dependent on installation date, too, because obviously we don't want bags of concrete sitting around that would get hard in the meantime, but
I was looking at it, I didn't see the concrete.
Yeah, this is strictly just, just the fencing material, and I don't think it's going to be a large amount of, of concrete, cost-wise anyway, but that, that will probably be an additional cost as it pertains to this project.
I, I think, ooh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add the improvements, things like this. I don't mean frivolous spending, but I think things like this that improve safety and things like that in our parks are really important, and I'm happy to entertain that. And I just wanted to ask, were you able, after you were elected on April 10th, were you able to revisit the Parks and Rec budget? Because I never got one, so I level-funded it, and I'm not sure how that all
So
shook out for next year, for things that you made.
Yes, we, in the initial stages of the, of the FinCon meetings, they were going to make the recommendation to zero-fund it, because at that point, prior to me taking the position, no budget had been submitted, but they were gracious enough to let us revisit it. I sat down with Town Administrator Mullen, we got all the records from the last five years from the town accountant and saw what our typical spending was, and then it, it worked out pretty well, and we actually, the last year's budget request was $23,100, and we actually were able to cut it down. Next year's budget's going to be $20,700, so we saved the town a little bit of money, and we're going to try to do a little more with a little less.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, Selectman Hall.
Mr. Smith, have, has Mr. Gales gone with you to do a tour of all the playgrounds?
Yes, we had him ride some slides this weekend.
Okay.
Yes, he, he attended, not in an official capacity, but as a member of the public on Saturday with us, and, and, and visited the parks.
Has he given you a list of recommendations?
He has not, because we haven't made it an official agenda item as of right now. We were trying to try, and again, because we're running out of time with the fiscal year and we have some money to work with, we, we're trying to just address general maintenance needs, but one of the, but it's, you know, and ADA is always in the back of my mind anyway. So like, one of the things is, like, when we put in these gates, we're going to have the kick plates on the gate so that those gates are compliant and things like that. But in, like I said, in an unofficial capacity, he did visit with us, and he did point out a couple of things to us, but I think, and I tend to, the last two meetings that we've had, I've, I've always cited the KMA report in our agenda, just so that it's on our radar, and, and the commission is aware that that's something that we need to tackle. But at some point, once we kind of get through these maintenance issues, then we'll kind of have a, a more focused conversation on, on those needs, like some of the things will be pathways to the, we have a lot of nice picnic tables that were installed in the, in the town with handicap seating, without a handicap access to it, so, things like that, which is something that I would probably say might, you know, if time allows, might come up before the end of the fiscal year. It's one of the things that's on my radar.
That came up in the KMA report. I, I know I went with the ADA coordinator, myself, and Representative KMA, we went to some of the playgrounds, and that's one of the things that they noted. But the public should know that Mr. Smith is also a member of the Commission on Disability, so I believe he's very conscious of the needs of people with disabilities, so I thank you for that. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. How do you vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
And Dr. Z, and Campuchico is also aye. I just, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
I also want to bring up at this time, then, since we're talking about discretionary spending and having this stuff come back to us, I would, I'm interested, and the departments have been very reasonable about their requests. I'm asking, how does the board feel about having the, you know, have Mr. Mullen speak on it also, but how does the board feel about, in the future, any discretionary spending that the Town Administrator review it and, and approve what he thinks is appropriate, rather than it come back to us, at least for the end of this fiscal year? And we can review it again in July to see how it's going. Any comments about that?
I fully support it. When we discussed this originally, when former Selectman Gulart was on the board, I think we were in a different time. I think there was a lot of anxiety and stress about, are we going to get those chapter reimbursements from the state that we really rely on? All that has panned out. The department heads, not just in their spending, in their requests, even for next fiscal year, have been very, just very conciliatory, very thoughtful in understanding of our financial situation and the uncertainty around it. I support that, the Town Administrator being able to approve it. My only request is that that information, please make its way to the selectmen, those things that are being approved and/or denied, just so we can take a look at it. But I'm okay with the Town Administrator, as is done in other towns, really taking the reins on it, provided they are comfortable with that as well.
Sure. Mr. Hall?
Mr. Pacheco, great confidence in Mr. Mullen's work and his decision-making process. And with that in mind, if Dr. Z could put that in a formal motion, I would be glad to second.
I'd be. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the Town Administrator to review and approve or deny all future discretionary spending requests for fiscal year 2021, and that, that documentation be sent to the selectmen regularly.
May I second it? Any further discussion? Mr. Mullen, are you okay with that?
Ah, yes, I am, and, yes, I appreciate the confidence in the board, but I mean, just like, oh, you know, oh, like, I really appreciate the fiscal dis, the fiscal diligence, like, of the prior Town Administrator as well. Like, this year, oh, you know, this year and at this point in the fiscal year, one of the things we're very all mindful of is how we're closing out FY21, when we want to close out the budget, like with, like, in a way that really guarantees as much free cash as possible. Oh, like, so like, I, I am laser-focused on that, but I also understand, oh, you know, that departments, they have and they plan needs as well. Oh, you know, and trying to really continue that type of restraint while realizing the needs, as something, oh, you know, that is really going to be front and center for me over the next seven weeks, and, oh, like, then obviously, like, reporting on those with the board as well. So, yes.
Thank you.
May I ask you a procedural question?
Yes.
Will we revisit this after the start of the next fiscal year? How do you want to do that?
It's not part of the motion, but I had asked that in July, that the board review this, to see whether we want to continue
Okay.
having a Town Administrator. Not that I'm questioning you, Mr. Mullen, but just, we have a role in this also, so.
Oh, yeah, no, that's perfect. Thank you.
Selectman Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye. Public input, have we got any public input from either emails or phone calls?
Mrs. Gulat.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Gulat, yes, speak, please.
I've got a couple of issues. I'll just do quickly the MMA meeting today. Senator Becca Rauch and Representative Carolyn Dyckmore were present, and we discussed the MMA involvement with some of the legislation that we have refiled, and I won't go into that in detail, because you've heard it before. But what I do want to bring to your attention, and I'm going to email this to the Selectmen's Office, there is legislation proposed. It's an act that would establish the municipal reforestation program, a powerful strategy for climate change mitigation and environmental justice. This legislation has many, many benefits, so I am going to forward it to the Selectmen's Office, the Trails Committee, Land Use Committee, Conservation Committee, Agricultural Commission, on and on. I think once you have a chance to see this, this is legislation that they should probably follow, and it provides a lot of information also with the, with the individual homeowner can do, to help promote reforestation, and obviously not reforestation in your backyard, but even planting one tree, and the benefits to the environment of doing that. So I'm going to send that off to you. The legislation that's been discussed has a lot to do with nutrition under the COVID Act and how they're, I guess you call them pockets of places in the, in the Commonwealth, where people have not been able to get food or get, or if they've got food, it's not proper nutrition, and so these are all things that are being looked at with the start of the new legislative year. So that was MMA. Why don't you give your update on Brook Street, so? So So. Does that have to do with, as Edia and I mentioned, conversations we had for today?
You're breaking up, Mrs. Gulat. And now you're frozen.
Um, the, the.
Comcast.
Let's, let me close, just with this. Can you, can you hear it?
No.
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 You're breaking up.
Can you hear it?
No.
No. You're frozen.
Yep. I think it's perfect. So it looks like it's the meeting room.
Okay. This is, what street thing is it, what, so what I'm doing is, I'm coming down to the meeting, wait for your other colleague to come with me, because this is something you need to know about.
Oh, my goodness.
I think she said she's going to come back at the second public.
Second public.
Yeah. I think I heard somebody say it's our connection.
Okay.
Really?
I think I heard somebody say that.
Mr. Mellow was saying that, I think.
So I think it would be our Wi-Fi connection.
Comcast.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak, public input? No other public input? Thank you. Announcements, Dr. Z, can you read the announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first announcement I would like to make while we check our internet connection is about the leash law. I just want to remind Dightonians that when you are not on your own property with your dog, it is a bylaw that you must leash your dog. It's the law. It was approved at a town meeting by other Dighton residents. And so, please, 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 we have had dog incidents in the past. We would like to avoid dog incidents in the future. So please leash your animal according to the bylaw. You're welcome, ACO Ferry. Please, it makes everyone's life easier administratively. It will make the animal control officer's job easier, and it will make your, you and your pets safer when you are outside with them. So thank you for your cooperation, and please also license them. That is also another announcement we should make. Town of Dighton public buildings are now open to the public. You do not need to make an appointment. Please come, please wear your mask, but we are open, and we are happy to see everyone again. A vaccination center has opened at Anawan Pharmacy at Route 44 and 118. Appointments can be made by visiting anawanpharmacy.com and clicking on the COVID-19 button on their homepage, and I want to thank former Selectman Gulart for that information. The Friends of the Dighton Public Library and the Dighton Lions Club are doing a joint fundraiser called Small Town Big Heart. Pick up your heart signs and show your support and love for Dighton. Suggested donation for the signs are $5. You can purchase the signs at the Dighton Public Library via curbside pickup during library hours or at Arujo Farms on Williams Street, cash or check only. The Town of Dighton Food Bank Distribution will be held next on May 15, 2021, located at the Town Hall, 979 Somerset Avenue, Lower Level, as a drive-through. And we want to, as always, thank the Dighton Lions Club for that. Rabies Vaccination Day will be held on Saturday, May 15, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Dighton Animal Shelter, which is, for those who are unaware, 821 Tremont Street, right next to the transfer station. The Dighton Historical Society, do you have to do your non-disc, just kidding? Is hosting a plant sale on Saturday, May 22, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Winslow Davis Museum on, at 1217 Williams Street. Please stop by to get your plants for your gardens. There will be a historical house marker ceremony on the same day at 11:00 a.m. That's very nice. The Board of Health has rescheduled its annual bulky curbside item pickup to June 7, 2021 through June 11, 2021. Items must be sent out no later than 7:00 a.m. Tags may be purchased at the Board of Health Office, 111 Somerset Avenue, Lower Level. The annual town meeting will be held on Monday, June 7, 2021. Can we put a time on that next meeting? Thank you. The town's, the town clerk's office would like to remind residents, again, to please license your dogs. Massachusetts general law requires dog licenses for dogs six months of age or older. Please contact the clerk's office at 508-669-5411, option two with any questions. The following boards and committees have vacancies. The Bylaw Review Committee, the Cemetery Commission, the Conservation Commission, the Dighton Trails Committee, the Finance Committee, the Human Rights Committee, the Land Use Committee, Superintendent of Pest Control, which is not a committee, it is an appointed position, the TIF Review Board, the Cable Television Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, the Development and Industrial Committee, the DR School District Facilities Committee, the Historical Commission, the Industrial and Development Financing Authority, the Municipal Building Study Committee, the Taxation Aid Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Chairman, would it be possible if our office could coordinate with some of these committees and get, like, maybe a short blurb on what they do? Because I think sometimes the reason that people don't apply is just simply they're, they don't know, like, what the Land Use Committee really does, and I think that, that might go a little way. If we could get them to respond and just, a little mission statement or something might help. Thank you.
I think Ms. Brady has got that information. She'll get that information for us.
You're the best.
Thank you for reading the announcements. Town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Dr. Z just mentioned, we are planning for the town meeting, in the special town meeting, on the 7th of June, and actually working with the school, the end of last week, the fire chief and I were up, like, actually meeting with the, with the facilities folks at the school. We also had an internal meeting the beginning of last week with all internal town stakeholders, and the fire chief and I tomorrow afternoon, like, a meeting with the town clerk, in the former town clerk. I like, actually back at the school to just plan for, like, logistical type of issues for the evening of town meeting. As of right now, we know the evening of June 7 is also a volleyball game in the gym that we just want to make sure we're planning for and anticipating, like, any entrance and logistical issues. So I think I'm meeting with the town clerk tomorrow, we'll be able to identify and plan those forward. So I do expect a full update, like, on all the logistics and any expectations that residents should be able to expect at the May 26, at the May 26 meeting. So that is the town, the town meeting planning update. The capital, the capital outlay committee, like, we convened the end of last month with plans to meet again on the 24th of June. Had a really good meeting, talked about a lot of initial, like, initial goals, really to re, to come up with a really good funding structure for the capital stabilization account, where we can have a dedicated recurring number that we fund the account to be able to fund, like, both short-term and long-term capital needs projects. So, and also, at the same time, the Municipal Building Study Committee, a lot of the capital outlay committee's work is going to intersect with that committee, based on the needs of our buildings, and so the work of one is going to inform the other, which is really exciting in terms of planning and really costing out how we go forward. In terms of an update on the FY '20 outside audit, in the FY '19 and '20 management letters, the town accountant and I did have an exit interview with outside auditor yesterday afternoon, and at, at the meeting on the 20, also on the 26, if it's okay, the accountant and I will have a very short presentation, just really to bring the board up to speed on our financial position through the end of FY '20, along with the management letter issues that we're already working on addressing. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. Then a few weeks ago, there was a conversation with the town clerk about the, like, about the tax collector in the town clerk's boxes, actually right outside Town Hall. And I really want to thank the building commissioner for his efforts on it. He actually went, he went to Granger, he picked them up, and I believe now we have them in the town's possession, and there, it's actually been coordinating work with Mr. Ferry, and one of the suggestions that Mr. Ferry has, which has been brought into by all the applicable department heads, like, it's actually moving both, actually moving both drop boxes to under the overhang in the rear of Town Hall. That way, both boxes will be able to be seen from the security cameras. They'll be protected from the weather. Like, in that area is already an accessible area, so we, so we wouldn't have to deal with any curb cuts or any other issues. So I just wanted to bring everyone up to speed on that and to let the public know that really beginning, probably I'd say by the end of the month, those boxes will be relocated to the rear of Town Hall. And, you know, just when that happens, we'll be sure to get the word out through social media, through Channel 9 and all the regular outlets, so people know what to expect.
We'll add that to the announcements that you can read.
Absolutely. Getting longer.
Selectman Hull?
Mr. Mullen, would it be wise to put up a sign in the upper parking lot, telling people that the boxes are located, where they're now located?
Yes, and I neglected to say that. That's already part of the plan as well, so.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Good question.
Thank you, Mr. Hull.
So probably should be located near where the drop boxes now.
Yes.
Because that's what people are going to go to. I know I've gone to it, so.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
All business. Review, discuss, and act on the approval of the annual and special town meeting warrants, including budget and special article requests. I'm going to read the articles for the special town meeting. Is, is that, what time is that? I don't see the time.
It's usually 6:00 p.m., and the annual is at 7:00, correct?
Six or 6:30, but.
Six or 6:30.
6:30?
And the special town meeting.
But I thought they needed time to, like, recheck, you know how everyone has to check back in? So I thought we normally did 6:00.
We do.
Okay.
We do.
6:00 p.m., okay.
So this would be at 6:00 p.m.?
If that's what the board wishes.
Do we need to vote on the time? I, can we just? I'll ask for a motion to vote on the time that the special town meeting on June 7 should occur. Is there a motion and a time?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we set the time for the special town meeting to be 6:00 p.m. on June 7, 2021, and the annual town meeting to be 7:00 p.m. on June 7, 2021.
May I second it?
Any discussion? If not, how do you vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico also votes aye. So I'm going to read the special town warrants for June 7. To either of the constables of the Town of Dighton in the County of Bristol, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Dighton qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at Dighton Rehoboth Regional High School on Monday, the 7th of June, oop, does have a time. 7th of June, 2021, we're going to change the time to 6:00. Then and there to act on the following articles. Article 1, to hear reports of the town officials and act thereof. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to transfer funds from free cash in the treasurer, in the treasury, a sum of $1,705.55 to pay prior year bills as follows or take any action relative thereto. Zoning Board of Appeals, number 171, line number 5119, salary member stipend to fund retroactive pay in fiscal year 20 for one member from June 9 through June 30, 2020, in the amount of $71.04. Board of Selectmen, Data Processing, number 155, line item 5303, network support fees in the amount of $1,437.50 for service rendered in fiscal year 2020. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $260,000, to fund an adjustment to the final assessment payment for the Dighton Rehoboth Regional School District for fiscal year 2021, and to be placed in expense account number 5690, or take any action there or relative thereto. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $60,653.17 from free cash to the conservation fund establishment, established by Chapter 82 of the Special Acts of 2004. Said sum was collected from rollback taxes collected during the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, and credited to the general fund. Chapter 82 of the Special Acts of 2004 specifically requires that any rollback taxes collected during the fiscal year shall be deposited in a special conservation commission fund to be used for the acquisition of and/or interest in land of conservation purposes or take any action relative thereto. And Article 5, to act upon any other business that lawfully may be introduced at said meeting. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof of each of the boss, of the post offices at the Town Hall and at the main fire station, all in said Dighton, 14 days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Here to fail not and make do, return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid. Given under oath, hands this May 12, 2021, in the year of our Lord, 2021. And it's, it'll be signed, if approved, as the warrants by the chairman, the clerk, Mr. Hull, and Dr. Z. And it'll be also signed by the town clerk and posted as directed to the constable. Is anybody that would entertain a motion to approve these warrants, to be placed, special warrants for June 7 at, for 6:00 p.m.? Is there a motion?
Before I make that motion, can I just ask a procedural question?
Sure.
Typically, we do approve it. Are we also making our recommendations, as we always do tonight?
I was, yes, I was going to ask, after we approve these warrants, what is our position as the board of selectmen as to whether or not we're going to make these recommendations?
Mr.
Nope. I'm asking for a motion, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special town meeting warrant as prepared this evening, except for, under greetings, we changed the time to 6:00 p.m. on the 7th of June, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, ask for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. Now, we like the board's recommendation on these article warrants, these warrant articles. Is there a recommendation from the board of selectmen?
Mr. Chairman, before I make a motion on the recommendations, I support Articles 1 through 5 in their entirety. So I'm happy to make those motions for those recommendations, if the board is amenable.
Yes, and we can discuss it if anybody has any question. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Selectman Zorogras?
Aye.
And Campachico is an aye. So the board of selectmen is recommending those warrant articles. Now for the annual town meeting. This is quite a few pages. I'm going to read some of it, but I will not read all of it, and I would ask my colleagues to share in that responsibility. Yes?
I have a procedural question.
Being the new kid on the block.
Yep.
As we read through these, if we have a different view than the FinCon, do we deal with it then, or do we deal with it separately?
We would deal with it tonight? That's usually.
Yeah, we're going to deal with, but he's asking if we, once the article is read, whether or not we can deal with it then. I thought in the past, and correcting Dr. Z and Mrs. Gulat here also, is that we voted to have these warrants on the warrant articles approved, as far as being on the warrant for the residents to vote on, and then we, anybody who questions any of the articles can discuss that, and then we vote on the articles. can discuss that, and then we vote on the articles that we don't have a disagreement on. Rather than going through all of them, we just, you know, if somebody has a question on Article 18, for example, I have no idea what Article 18 is. But if somebody has a question on that, then we can discuss, and we can decide whether or not the Board of Selectmen is making that recommendation. Is that okay with you, Selectman Hull?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So Town of Dyton Annual Town Meeting Warrant for June 7, 2021, at 7 for 7:00 PM. To either of the constables of the town of Dyton in the county of Bristol, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Dyton qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Dyton Rehoboth Regional High School auditorium on Monday, the 7th of June, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Then and there to act on the following articles. Article 1, to hear reports of the town officials and the Capitol Outlet Committee and act thereon. Article 2, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint all necessary town officials and town committees not otherwise provided for by statute or act thereon. Article 3, to act relative to establishing the salaries of elected town officials for fiscal year 2022 in accordance with the provisions of Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the general laws or act thereon. Board of Assessors, the chairman, figure would be $87,427.44. Members to each is $4,855.50 for a total of $97,138.44. Board of Selectmen, chairman, $5,000, and the members, the two members is also $5,000 each for a total of $15,000. The three wardens, $263.82. I don't know how they come up with that figure. The moderator is $596.85. The town clerk is $81,565.07. The town collector is $41,934.69. The town treasurer is $41,934.69. The planning board, the chairman, is $2,195.16. The members for each is $2,195.16 for a total of $10,975.80. And the sewer commissioner, chairman, is $3,230. Members, there are two each, $2,143 for a total of $7,516. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation and/or transfer from available funds the appropriate appropriation necessary to defray town charges and assessments as considered by the Finance Committee or act thereon. Town of Dyton budget for the fiscal year 2021. Account number 113, town meeting, personal expenses, $2,700. Expenses, $1,500 for a total of $4,200. Account number 114, moderator, personal expenses, $500. Total appropriation, $500. Account number 122, the Board of Selectmen, personal expenses, $91,119.50 and the expenses of $80,650 for a total of $171,769.50. Account number 124, town administrator, personal expenses, $153,86. Expenses, $9,410. Total appropriations, $162,496.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm sorry, you're reading the current fiscal year, and I think we need, no, it's okay, it's printed weird.
No, 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 I'm glad you pointed that out, but I gotta, I now gotta go back.
Just to the budgets, just to that first one.
Yeah, so the town meeting expenses were the same as last year, the moderator was the same. The Board of Selectmen, personal expenses, current year, excuse me, fiscal year 2022, $99,118.77 and expenses, $83,550 for a total appropriation of $182,668.77. I appreciate you bringing that to my attention instead of waiting for me to go through the whole thing.
No, I know.
And have to repeat the whole thing. Account number 124, town administrator, $157,690.77 and expenses is $9,410 for a total The account number 131, Finance Committee, is $3,595 for personal expenses and expenses themselves is $700 for a total of $4,295. Account number 132, Reserve Fund, expenses, $50,000. Account number 135, Town Accountant, $127,070.73 and $0.65 for personal expenses, expenses is $26,240 for a total of $153,313.65. Account number 141, Board of Assessors, personal expenses is $206,104.50 and expenses are $17,050 for a total appropriation of $223,000, $223,154. Account number 145, Town Treasurer, personal expenses, $91,222.81. Expenses is $36,325. Account number 146, Town Collector?
You have to give the tot, just the total.
Oh, total, did I not give the total?
Nope.
For account number 145, Town Treasurer, the total appropriation is $127,547.81. 146, account number 146, Town Collector, personal expenses is $92,322.81 and the expenses are $21,525 for a total appropriation of $113,000, $113,00847.81. Town Council, account number 151, expenses is $50,000. Account number 155, Data Processing, personal expenses is zero, expenses is $66,706.28. Total appropriation is the same, $66,706.28. Account number 158, Tax Title Foreclosure, expenses is $16,000, total appropriation is $16,000. Account number 161, Town Clerk, personal expenses, $132,559 and expenses is $6,550 for a total of $1,139,109.60. Elections, account number 162, personal expenses is $3,900, expenses is $8,600. Total appropriation is $12,500. Account number 163, Registration, personal expenses is $600, expenses is $4,100 and the total appropriation is $4,700. Account number 171, Conservation Commission, personal expenses, $57,520. Expenses, $4,000 for a total of $61,520. Account number 174, Dyton Trails Committee, expenses, $2,550. Account number 175, Planning Board, personal expenses, $54,973.52 and expenses is $18,264.55 for a total appropriation of $73,238.7. Account number 176, Board of Appeals, personal expenses, $28,611.15 and expenses is $11,950 for a total of $40,561.15. The Agricultural Commission, account number 179, personal expenses is $2,515. Personal expenses is zero, expenses is $2,515. Total appropriation is $2,515. Count number 192, get ready for somebody to take over when we get to the 200s. 192, Public Billings and Property Maintenance, expenses, $174,100. Total appropriation is $174,100. Account number 193, Building Insurance, expenses is $50,000. Total appropriation is $50,000. Count number 195, Town Reports, expenses, $2,500. Total appropriation is $2,500. And I would ask someone, for total amount of all those budgets we talked about is $1,720,78.41. I would ask somebody to continue with Public Safety.
Budget, account number 210, Police Department, personnel expenses, $1,607,674.67. Expenses, $161,500 for a total appropriation of $1,769,174.67. Account 215, Communications Department, personnel expenses, $359,996.13. Expenses, $30,950 for a total appropriation of $390,946.13. Account 220, Fire Department, personnel expenses, $650,946.60. Expenses, $99,802 for a total appropriation of $750,748.60. Account 231, Ambulance Services, personnel expenses, $658,911.43. Expenses, $123,050 for a total appropriation of $781,961.43. Just a note, RNA, $216,362.46 for personnel. Ambulance Fund, $410,000 even for personnel. And one, from the ambulance fund, $130,050 for expenses. Account 241, Building Inspection, personnel expenses, $131,248.38. Expenses, $38,130 for a total appropriation of $169,378.38. Account 242, Gas Inspection, personnel expenses, $8,000 even for a total appropriation of $8,000. Account number 243, Plumbing Inspection, personnel expenses, $8,000. Total appropriation, $8,000 even. Account 244, Waits and Measures, personnel expenses, $1,200. Expenses, $370 for a total appropriation of $1,570. Account 245, Electrical Inspection, personnel expenses, $20,000 for a total appropriation of $20,000 even. Account 292, Animal Control Officer, personnel expenses, $23,558.40. Expenses, $10,000 for a total appropriation of $33,558.40. Account 294, Forestry, personnel expenses, $263.82 for a total appropriation of $263.82. Account 295, Harbor Master, personnel expenses, $2,500 even. Expenses, $5,800 for a total appropriation of $8,300. Note, transfer $5,000 from MWIMF and, and raise and appropriate $6,800. Account 299, Emergency Preparedness Committee, expenses, $8,500 for a total appropriation of $8,500. Total Public Safety, fiscal year 2022 request, excuse me, is $3,950,401.43. Education, account number 300, education, expenses, 5690. Fiscal year 2022 request is $11,155,432 for the Dyton-Rehoboth Regional School District. Expenses, 5691. Fiscal year 2022 request is $101,076 for the Bristol County Agricultural High School. And expenses, 5692 for the Bristol Plymouth High School is $1,600, $60,000, excuse me, and $859 for a total education fiscal year 2022 request of $12,317,291.76. Highway, account number 422, Highway Construction and Maintenance, personnel expenses, $621,397.73. Expenses, $161,900 for a total appropriation of $783,297.73. Account number 423, Snow and Ice Control, personnel expenses, $13,250. Expenses, $36,750 for a total appropriation of $50,000 even. Account number 429, Dyton Berkeley, Berkeley-Dyton Bridge, I like how someone put Dyton first. Expenses, just an observation, expenses, $1,500 for a total appropriation of $1,500 even. Account number 432, Street Cleaning/Stormwater, the personnel expenses, the request for FY22 is $127,695.43 and the expenses are $102,160 even. For total appropriation of $229,855.43 for a total highway fiscal year 2022 request of $1,64,653.16. Sanitation, account number 433, Waste Collection and Disposal, personnel expenses, the request for FY22 is $9,226.77 and the expenses request is $740,041.54 for a total appropriation of $749,268.31 for a total sanitation departmental fiscal year 2022 request of $749,268.31. Other Environmental, account number 491, Cemetery, expenses request for FY22 is $19,700 even for a total appropriation of $19,700 even. And the total other environmental departmental request is $19,700 even.
Thank you, Dr. Z.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask Selectman Hull to start with the Human Services, account number 510.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Under Human Services, account number 510, Board of Health Regulations and Inspection, personal expenses, $62,221.33. Expenses, $1,500 for total appropriation of $63,721.33. Account number 519, Board of Health Administration, personal expenses, $69,186.25. The expenses, $4,900 for a total appropriation of $74,86.25. Account number 541, Council on Ages, personal expenses, $85,434.60. Expenses, $20,025.60. The total appropriation, $105,459.60. For account number 542, Primetime, personal expenses, $77,243.81 for a total appropriation Count number 543, Veteran Services, personal expenses, $48,154.75. Expenses, $85,825 for a total appropriation of $133,979.75. The ADA Coordinator, account number 549, personal expenses, $8,000. Expenses, $8,200. Total appropriation, $16,820 and no cents. The total Human Services appropriation for fiscal year 2022 is $471,310.74. Under Culture and Recreation, count number 610, Public Library, personal expenses, $199,235.66. Expenses, $71,374 for a total appropriation of $270,609.66. Account number 630, Park and Recreation, expenses, $20,700. Total appropriation, $20,700. Town Historian expenses, zero. Total appropriation- Town historian expenses, zero, total appropriation, zero. Account number six ninety-one, Historical Commission, expenses, two thousand dollars for total appropriation of two thousand dollars. Account number six ninety-eight, Cable Commission, personal expenses, twenty thousand dollars. Expenses, twelve thousand one hundred dollars for a total, to- total appropriation, thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars. Note, Peg Access and Cable Related Fund, thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars. The total Culture and Recreation appropriation for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, three hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred nine dollars and sixty-six cents. Debt Services, account number seven hundred and ten, Maturing Principal on Long-Term Debt. Expenses, two hundred forty-one thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars for total appropriation of two hundred forty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Title V, six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Account number seven fifty-one, Interest on Long-Term Debt, the expense, one hundred forty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total appropriation of one hundred forty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total Debt Services for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, three hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars.
Thank you, uh, Selectman Hull. I will continue, although I believe both of you did a better job than I did, so. Uh, but I, I gotta do my share. Employee Benefits, account number nine eleven. Retirement and Pension Contributions, expenses, eight hundred ninety thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars. Total Appropriations, eight hundred ninety thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars. With count number nine twelve, Workman's Compensation Insurance, expenses, fifty-six thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. Total Appropriations, fifty-six thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. Account number nine fourteen, Group Health Insurance, expenses, one million two hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents for a total appropriation of one million two hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Account number nine fifteen, Group Insurance, expenses, seven hundred dollars, total appropriation is seven hundred dollars. Count number nine sixteen, Employee Contribution, expenses, eighty-two thousand dollars, total appropriation is eighty-two thousand dollars. Count number nine, nine nineteen, Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEP, OPEP. Uh, expenses, thirty-five thousand, total appropriations, thirty-five thousand. Count number nine twenty, Tuition, expenses, eighteen thousand dollars for total appropriation of eighteen thousand dollars. Total Employee Benefits is two million two hundred ninety-eight dol- uh, two million two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Settlements, account number nine forty, fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-two request is zero. Court Judgments, nine, the count number nine forty-one request is zero. Total Settlement and Court Judgments is zero. Liability Insurance, account number nine forty-five, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for expenses, total appropriations, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Total Liability Insurance, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. General Fund Totals, this is the, all the money that the town is requesting, is twenty-three million dollars, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, six hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. So before we go on to the other articles, I will ask for a motion to approve the articles one through four to be put on the warrant.
So move.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion?
Yes, may I, I just caught a couple things, if I may, Mr. Chair, just, um, housekeeping things. So on, where it says Cable Commission, six, account number six ninety-eight, it's the Cable Television Committee. Um, that is their official name. Um, and this is just to approve them, correct?
This is just to approve them, uh, for the, uh, the warrant.
Then that was the only, um, suggested change that I have.
Uh, any further discussion, if not, all those in favor say aye, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And, uh, Campuchico, aye. So now we're going to make our recommendations on Articles, uh, one through four. Is there any, uh, discussion or questions about that?
Um, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, it's a little hard for me to fi- like, go back into what the Board of Selectmen had previously recommended, um, because I don't have that information in front of me. The only one that sticks out to me right now as a difference between what the Finance Committee recommended and what the Board recommended by majority vote, not by unanimous vote, was account number five four nine, the ADA Coordinator. And, um, I'm just opening that for further discussion.
If I can, uh, uh, talk about that, the, we've attended, uh, six FinCom meetings and we've gone over all the budgets. There was a request for a higher figure, I think, these maybe sixteen thousand twenty dollars offhand. Uh, but after, uh, and the recommendation from the, uh, FinCom is three thousand dollars plus a thousand dollars, I believe, in expenses, I think.
Two thousand.
Two thousand expenses, so five thousand dollars in expenses. I'm in agreement with the FinCom's, uh, recommendation, uh, and I've also spoken with the ADA Coordinator and he's, uh, also in agreement with that, uh, budget. I'm not sure what the other members feel on that, but I would be supporting the, on all the budgets, uh, the FinCom's, uh, recommendation. We've, we started off being almost a half, a little bit more than a half a million dollars over the levy, we had to make cuts. Some departments have agreed to those cuts, others wanted to go forward with their, uh, recommendation, which is fine. But I do, uh, support fully, uh, the recommendations of the FinCom, they've done a lot of work, uh, as they always do and I'm supporting their recommendation. Uh, Selectman Hull, do you have any comments?
Actually, in regards to personnel expenses,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, after having discussions with many, many people following, well, I said it, the Finance Committee, I am supporting the three thousand dollar recommendation of FinCom. However, I question the expenses. Originally, ADA had put in a request for four thousand dollars and that was cut to two thousand. And I just want to caution people, under the Americans with Disabilities Act, employees who have disabilities are entitled to reasonable accommodations. That is not a luxury, that is the law. So, my experience in creating budgets, we usually put together requisitions. And usually when we throw out numbers, it's based on past practice, past expenses, or a estimate of expenses that are based upon real needs. So although there's two thousand dollars here, I hope the town understands that they may have to appropriate more if they stick with that two thousand dollar number. Because under ADA, he is entitled to those reasonable accommodations.
Correct, and I agree with that. But the FinCom's recommendation is only a thousand dollars for that account. Other expenses is for supplies and, and so it's two, a total of two, two thousand dollars. We're going to have the, uh, Town Administrator monitor the, uh, the services that are needed by the ADA Coordinator. And quite frankly, and I agree with you a hundred percent, if, uh, the ADA Coordinator needs further assistance, further monies, we are obligated, uh, to fund that. But I think, uh, because this is the first year that, uh, that money's been allocated, he's never requested that in the past. I think the FinCom just wants to be cautious on it, uh, but it's going to cost us more than a thousand dollars, that's the reality of it.
May I, I just wanted to add, um, I, I fully agree with both of my colleagues. Um, before Town Administrator Mullen had come, um, I had, as the, uh, as acting in that role as the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen had also recommended three thousand dollars originally, so I totally support that. Um, and, and I'm going to support the Finance Committee's recommendation, I agree with your caution. And I think in FY twenty-two, if the Board is so amenable to allow the Town Administrator to approve certain discretionary spending requests, that maybe we could think about allowing Mr. Mullen to work sort of hand in glove with Mr., um, Gale, who's in that role as ADA Coordinator, um, and monitoring the auxiliary aids. My only question is, I know there was a very specific four thousand plus dollar request.
Four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
I know that auxiliary aids for someone who is vision impaired, um, and is an employee of the Town in Dyton, is required under Title II, and I understand that. My only, um, in agreement with your caution, Selectman Hull, my only question is, is a thousand dollars enough? I think we all have that, um, concern, so perhaps we can have a broader discussion in the new fiscal year when we revisit the discretionary spending requests and how they'll be handled, um, so that it doesn't have to wait, something like that, doesn't have to wait to come back to, um, the Board of Selectmen, because I know Mr. Gale and the COD Commission have a lot of important work to do and they will be very active in the next, um, fiscal year, especially with the, uh, Dyton Public Library's short-term, um, building needs, so. But I will support the Finance Committee's recommendation.
Is there anything else, uh, on the budget that, uh, any member disagrees with, with the FinCom's recommendation? Not the Department's recommendation, but the FinCom's rec- recommendation? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, I have a bug on my, hold on, okay, sorry. Um, I make a motion that we approve Articles One, I'm sorry, that we recommend Articles One through Four to mirror the Finance Committee recommendations, as listed in the warrant.
I second.
Any further discussion, if not, I'll ask for a vote, uh, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Soboffice.
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye. Continuing with the reading of the, uh, Articles, Article Number Five, and it just, uh, the public bear in mind, we have thirty-one Articles, I believe, so. Uh, Article Five, to see if the town will vote to approve the following sums to be expended under the direction of the Board of Sewer Commissioners for the maintenance of the sewer enterprise for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Direct costs, salaries, a hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Expenses, a hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Capital expenses, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and indirect cost, total of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. The above appropriations will be funded as follow. Three hundred and twelve thousand dollars through sewer receipts and a hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and seven dollars and twenty-five cents transferred from the sewer enterprise, retained earnings total of four hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Article Six, to see if the town would, excuse me, to see if the town will pursue under Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-three E and a Half, as most recently amended, establish fiscal year limitations on expenditures from the revolving fund established by the Town of Dyton by laws, Section Thirty-Six. Department revolving funds with such limitations for fiscal year twenty twenty-two as follows. Revolving account, trustees of the Dyton Public Library, uh, cop- copying, faxing, and printing services, five thousand dollar limit. Uh, trustees of the Dyton Public Library, fines and mon- monies collected for overdue loss or damaged materials, eight thousand dollars and Council on Aging Board, fees, charges, and receipts for services rendered by prime time, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction and further allow the Board of Selectmen to sell through the sale bid process according to Mass General Laws, Chapter Three, excuse me, Chapter Thirty-B, Section Sixteen, all properties which the town has legally acquired by tax title or take any action there relative thereto. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue, revenue of the financial year beginning July first, twenty twenty-one in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Four, and to issue a note or notes, therefore, payable within one year and to renew any notes or notes as may be given for the period of less than one year in accordance with General Laws, Mass General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Seventeen, or take any action there relative thereto. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to appro- appropriate from available funds from Mass Department of Public Works for fiscal year twenty twenty-two for the purpose of expanding funds for capital improvements of local roads, roads under transportation bond issued, Chapter Ninety, three hundred one thousand dollars and nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, or take any action relative thereto. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to make changes in grade, take land by purchase or eminent domain and to settle damages from land taken in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty twenty-two highway program under Chapter Ninety and the town road improvement program, or take any action relative thereto. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to grant to the Board of Selectmen the authority to obtain whatever parcels or easements as necessary, to make cha- changes in grade, take land by purchase or eminent domain and to settle damages from land taken in conjunction with highway maintenance or road or bridge reconstruction projects, or take any action relative thereto. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen, subject to the approval of the Finance Committee, to dispose of items returned to them by sale to the highest bidder or take any action relative thereto. Article Thirteen, to see if the Town of Dyton residents will vote to approve of applying the annual cost of living allowance to Mass Department of Revenue, local property tax exemptions for veterans and or surviving spouses under clauses twenty-two, twenty-two A, twenty-two B, twenty-two C, twenty-two D, twenty-two E, and twenty-two F per Section Five of the Mass General Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Chapter, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Chapter One Twenty-Six of the Acts of nineteen ninety-eight, or take any action relative thereof. So I'm going to ask for a motion, uh, that we approve the Art, the Articles Five through Thirteen to be placed on the warrant at the annual town meeting.
So move, second.
Any, uh, discussion, if not, I'll ask for a vote, uh, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
I actually do have a couple, they're just questions, not discussion, I, I don't disagree with any of them.
Okay, no, that's fine, no, that's.
Under Article Ten.
I'll get a second and then you can ask your questions, okay?
Second.
Second.
Yep.
Any discussion?
Yes, under Article Ten, just a question, the town road improvement program that they're alluding to, is that the street prioritization plan of Mr. Ferries? Okay, thank you, nice to see you.
Sorry, no.
Okay. But it's saying under Chapter Ninety and the town road improvement program, so I was just wondering what that was referring to. But thank you, we have Selectman Goulart here, if the camera's not paying.
In person.
Yeah. Um, my other question was, under, uh, it's not a question, under Article Five, I think it's supposed to read Finance Committee recommends, not recommendations. That was it? Huh? It's Article.
Page ten.
Five. Finance Committee recommends, it says recommendations, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, I'll call for a vote then, uh, Selectman Hull, or do you have any questions or?
No.
Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Soboffice.
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Now, uh, Board of Selectmen's recommendations on any Article from Article Five through Article Thirteen, is there any recommendations from the Board of Selectmen?
I will, if you're entertaining motions and the Board is amenable, I will make a motion to approve Articles, uh, to recommend, excuse me, Articles Five through Thirteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, uh, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Selectman Soboffice.
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye. Would someone like to continue reading, uh, from Article Fourteen, please?
Sure. Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Annual Reserves in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the Committee Administrative Expenses, Community Preservation Projects, and other expenses in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation, appropriations. From FY twenty twenty-two, estimated revenues for the Committee Administrative Expenses, five thousand dollars. Reserves, from FY twenty-two, twenty twenty-two estimated revenues for historical, for historic resources, excuse me, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. From FY twenty twenty-two, estimated revenues for community housing reserve, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. From FY twenty twenty-two, estimated revenues for open space, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And from FY twenty twenty-two, estimated revenues for budget reserve, eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars, Finance Committee recommends. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars from the Historic Resources Reserve to be expended by the Community Preservation Commission for the hiring of a preservation consultant to complete the Dyton Community Wide Survey Project to update the list. to update the listing of historic resources in town, or take any action relative thereto. Background, the town will be reimbursed $12,500 from the Massachusetts Historical Commission FY 2021 Survey and Planning Grant Program upon completion of the project, Finance Committee recommends, and for anyone watching, Mrs. Gales from the Historic Commission has been at several of our meetings discussing this. Article Sixteen, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $108,513.97 to be expended by the fire chief as the first payment of a seven-year lease purchase, lease to purchase, I think that should say lease to purchase, of a new fire engine and any necessary accessories related thereto, or take any action relative thereto, and the Finance Committee recommends that $108,514 even be taken from free cash. Article Seventeen, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $62,800 even to be expended by the Chief of Police for the purchase of one fully-equipped police vehicle, including computer, firearm, or patrol rifle, radio, antenna, and any accessories related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto, and the Finance Committee is recommending $45,000 from free cash. Article Eighteen, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum not to exceed $100,000 even to be expended by the Highway Superintendent to purchase one used forestry truck, or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends this come from capital stabilization, I believe that's the total $100,000. Article Nineteen, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $122,028.90 to be expended by the Highway Superintendent to purchase one utility tractor with a 21-foot, I believe, boom mower, or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends $64,029 be taken from free cash for that. Article Twenty, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $50,561.92 to be expended by the Highway Superintendent as the second-year lease payment on the 2020 Street Sweeper. Voted in Article Twenty-Two, Twenty-Two of the annual town meeting warrant of June 15th, 2020, or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends it be taken from free cash. Article Twenty-One, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $30,000 even to be expended by the Dayton Trails Committee to fund a feasibility study to provide viable options and initial concepts to connect the future two-mile DCR Sweet Snoll Trail to the north and south with on-road and off-road trail options to connect the Town of Dayton to the Taunton River Trails Network north across the three-mile river to Taunton and south along the waterfront to Somerset, or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends to defer. Article Twenty-Two, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum not to exceed $9,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to perform a townwide wage classification study for members of the clerical union, public employees Local 272, laborers International Union of North America, AFL-CIO, or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends free cash. Article Twenty-Three, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money not to exceed $90,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to perform renovations to Town Hall for upgrades and to provide additional office space, or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends to defer." Do you want me to keep going, or?
Which article was that, the last one you?
Twenty-Three.
If you could just read Twenty-Four, and then I want to ask Selectman Hull to continue.
Absolutely. Article Twenty-Four, "To see if the town will vote to reappropriate the amount of $118,529 from special article account number 010-2-422-0000-18-5300. Complete street sidewalk project approved in Article Forty-Four of the special town meeting on October 26, 2017 to be expended by the Highway Superintendent for an ADA-compliant roadway, sidewalk, and crosswalk accessibility project, or take any action relative thereto, and the Finance Committee recommends."
I'll ask for a motion to approve the Articles for the warrant, Articles Number Fourteen through Twenty-Four.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I have a second, but I have a question.
Discussion.
Twenty-One. Finance Committee recommends to defer. Should it say to defer to the fall, or does that leave it open-ended in?
I think they just said it, it, oh, I'm sorry.
No, my understanding, as you know from the Finance Committee, their recommendation is that it be deferred to the fall, however, it's not specific here. So maybe in our recommendation on these, we can ask that that be deferred to the fall meeting?
At least to be considered at the, we don't know if we'll.
Well, the article be deferred to the fall meeting, and let the voters decide on it. I'll ask for a, there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Before I give my aye, I just wanted to say, on Article Twenty-Three, you know, that's one of my goals, is to complete the Town Hall renovation project. I actually am going to agree, sorry, Mr. Aguiar, though I'm sure he agrees too, with the Finance Committee, Committee's recommendation to defer, because given what we've heard tonight about the Dayton Public Library, I think that this is fine. We can have the Building Commissioner, who is also our, like, town maintenance building person, go-to guy, to work closely hand-in-glove with Town Administrator Mullin and the other committee, and really have the library be the focus, at least in the short term. So I support this.
So, so we're voting right now, we're voting on putting the articles on the.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were recommending.
I don't think we're recommending, I think we're just voting on the articles. So it went to you, Dr. Z?
I second.
No, I think you're voting now.
Oh, yeah, aye.
Selectman Hull has said aye, you aye, and Campachico is also an aye. Recommendations for, on these articles, Articles Fourteen through Twenty-Four, I personally support the recommendations of the Finance Committee on these articles, and I also agree with what Dr. Z just said moments ago, that it should be recommended it be deferred to the fall special town meeting.
Are you entertaining motions?
I'll entertain a motion, yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we recommend Articles Fourteen through Twenty-Four as prepared in the warrant, except for Articles Twenty-One and Twenty-Three, which should read that the Board of Selectmen recommends to defer to the special town meeting, or the fall town meeting, however it's phrased.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll ask for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. Selectman Hull, could you continue with the Article Twenty-Five, please?
Article Twenty-Five, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any contracts and otherwise undertake any and all action necessary to accept a gift of real estate from the owners of real property located on the north side of Main Street and identified on the Town of Dayton Assessors Map Seventeen as Lot 129, being one acre of land, more or less. Lot 131, being 3.5 acres of land, more or less. Lot 164, being 1.73 acres of land, more or less. To be used for open space and recreation purposes contingent upon successful results of a Phase One environmental site assessment. And authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or appropriate to complete the foregoing acquisition, or take any action relative thereto. Article Twenty-Six, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Dayton zoning bylaws, Section 2916, by deleting the existing marijuana cultivator definition in its entirety and replacing with the following definition, marijuana cultivator, or taking any action thereon. Marijuana cultivator shall mean an entity licensed to cultivate, process, and package marijuana, and to deliver and/or transfer to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Article Twenty-Seven, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Dayton zoning bylaws, Section 2916, by deleting the existing marijuana product manufacturer definition in its entirety and replacing with the following definition, marijuana cultivator, or taking any action thereon. Marijuana product manufacturer shall mean an entity licensed to obtain, manufacture, process, or package cannabis or marijuana products, and to deliver and/or transfer these products to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Appendix A, use regular, I'm sorry, use regulation schedule of the Town of Dayton zoning bylaws shall be amended to reflect these changes. Article Twenty-Eight, "To see if the town will vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Thirty-Eight-H, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with DG Dayton LLC of Scottsdale, Arizona, with a principal place of business of 4,900 North Scottsdale Road, Suite 5,000, Scottsdale, Arizona, zip code 85251, or its assigns for a period of 15 years, and to approve said agreement under which DG Dayton LLC, with a principal place of business at 4,900 North Scottsdale Road, Suite 5,000, Scottsdale, Arizona, 85251, or its assigns, will pay the town a sum of money per year relative to 11 plus or minus acre parcel of land located at 2,734 Elm Street, Dayton, Mass., Map Twenty-Three, Parcel Ten, related to the construction and operation of a photovoltaic solar facility, with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately 3.13 megawatts, MW, alternating current AC. Said tax agreement on file in the town clerk's office, provided that the fiscal year 2020 appellate tax board matter involving the subject property is resolved as a condition precedent to execution of said pilot agreement, or take any action relative thereto. Article Twenty-Nine, "To see if the town will vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Thirty-Eight-H, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with GHTJA03 LLC of Dover, Delaware, with a principal place of business at 850 New Burton Road, number 201, Dover, Delaware, zip code 19904, or its assigns for a period of 20 years, and to approve said agreement under which GHTJA03 LLC, with a principal place of business at 850 New Burton Road, number 201, Dover, Delaware, or its assigns, will pay the town a sum of money per year relative to a 16.6 plus or minor acre parcel of land located at 893 Brook, Brook Street, Dayton, Massachusetts, Map Sixteen, Parcel Twenty-Eight, related to the construction and operation of a photovoltaic solar facility, with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately 2 megawatts, MW, alternative covenant, AC. Said tax agreement on file in the town clerk's office, or take any action relative thereto. Article Thirty, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Dayton Conversation."
Conservation.
I believe it.
Oh, typo.
Should that be conservation?
We can have a.
Commission Regulations, Bylaws and Policies in Section Three, by deleting said Section Three and replacing in its place the following Section Three, or take any action thereon. Applications for permits and requests for determination. Written application shall be filed with this commission to perform activities affecting resource areas protected by this bylaw. This application should be the standard form as set forth by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, DEP. At the time of a permit application, the applicant shall pay a filing fee as set forth by the DEP. No local fee is required, however, the local portion set forth by the DEP is necessary. At the time a permit application is received, or at any time during the hearing process, the commission is authorized to require an applicant to pay the fee for specific expert engineering and other consultant services deemed necessary by the commission to come to a final decision on the application. The commission will select the consultant in question. As provided by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three-G, the Dayton Conservation Commission may employ reasonable fees for the employment of outside consultants engaged by the commission for specific outside expert services. Such services shall be deemed necessary by the commission to come to a final decision on an application submitted to the Conservation Commission pursuant to the requirements of the Wetlands Protection Act, Mass General Law, Chapter One Thirty-One, Section Forty. The Dayton Wetlands Protections Bylaw, the Conservation Commission Act, Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Eight-C, or any other state or municipal statute, bylaw or regulation, as they may be amended from time to time. Conservation Commission may also impose fees for other consultant services related to the application review or permitting, conditioning, or monitoring under any of the above referenced laws or regulations. Said fees for said services shall be set forth in a regulation to be adopted by vote on the Conservation Commission in accordance with applicable law, including but not limited to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three-G. The commission may waive the filing fee, consultant fee, and costs and expenses for a permit application or request for determination filed by a government agency. The commission shall require the payment of the consultant fee prior to the initiation of consulting services. Failure by the applicant to pay the consultant fee specified by the commission within ten business days of the request for payment, or refusal of payment, shall be cause for the commission to deny the application based on lack of sufficient information to evaluate whether the project meets applicable performance standards in 310 CMR-10 and the Dayton Wetlands Protection Bylaws or Regulations. The applicant, the applicant shall pay the fee to the Town of Dayton to fund the 53G Consulting Services Account established by the commission with the town treasurer's office, which may be drawn upon by the commission for specific consulting services approved by the commission at one of its public meetings. The commission shall return any unused portion of the consulting fee to the applicant upon completion of the project, along with any accrued interest.
Thank you, Selectman Hull. I will entertain a motion, for the public, if you're still awake, I will entertain a motion that we approve Article, that we put on the warrant, Articles Twenty-Five through Thirty.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, and there'll be amending on Article Thirty. Conversation will be changed to conservation?
Mm-hmm. Do we want to have a conversation about that? Or want to share about time? I don't know. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. Article Thirty-One.
Oh, can, I still, I just wanted.
Recommendations, still, we haven't done.
No, I didn't even catch that part. I just wanted to ask, because we have people here who are in the know. On Article Twenty-Eight, I know it, it names the exact business. 28, I know it, it names the exact business, and my question is, where it says, or it's assigns, does that language cover us if ownership changes hands, because sometimes these things do? Okay, just making sure. I'm, I'm all set.
Yes, and, and I'm hoping that former Selectwoman Gulat will speak to these pilot agreements at the annual town meeting.
Gladly.
You've done a lot of work on these, so.
Please vote for, or do not act in our seats.
I'll entertain a motion on recommendations from the Board of Selectmen on these articles, Articles 25 through 30.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we recommend Articles 25 through 30 with Selectman Hull's amendment on Article 30.
Is there a?
I have a second.
Any discussion? If not, Selectman Hull, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campa Chico is also an aye. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Dyton's zoning bylaws in Section 6 by deleting the existing kennel residential definition in its entirety and replacing with the following definition of kennel residential or take any action thereon. Kennel residential, a pack of collections of four or more dogs that are owned or kept under single ownership for personal use and enjoyment, may be allowed in the residential or business district with approval of the, from the animal patrol officer and/or chief of police or his or her designated. This also includes a personal kennel as defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 136A. Note, this section does not apply to properties with three dogs or less. I'm going to ask that this article not be put on the warrant, that we have some more investigation on this and the wording of this article, so that we have it at, on the special town meeting in the fall, if it's completed at that time.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I think I know where you're going with this, and I'm going to support your request. My only question is, I really hope that we get this right for the next town meeting. This has been brought back and approved by residents several times. No, I'm sorry, it's, it was approved once, and then it came back. So it's come to a town meeting several times, and I really just want the special town meeting in the fall to please be the last time. So that is, that's my ask.
Yeah, I think it's been approved, then it came back, and then we withdrew it, I think, at one of the town, special annual town meeting. Selectman Hull?
Has this article been reviewed by town council, this particular one?
Yes, it has. Yes, all the proposed articles have been reviewed by town council.
Did he have any recommendations?
He, he, as I understand, he really looks at the language, he doesn't really get into the policy, real decisions of the articles, but for what it's worth, I do agree with Mr. Pacheco. I think taking a good hard look, all I got, kennel, kennel, kennel licensing articles, I'm sorry, bylaws in the entirety would be really helpful.
I just wanted to make a point, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, that town council said that Article 31 does seek to make changes to the zoning bylaw and that a two-thirds vote will be needed, as well as a planning board recommendation, but they didn't, they didn't state one way or the other that was, you know, in good order.
So I will entertain a motion that Article 31 be continued to the special town meeting in the fall.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend, right? Recommend, or so we're going to keep it on? Okay, we're going to keep it on?
I don't believe we're going to keep it on. I think we're not going to put it.
Okay, so I'll change my wording.
Am I correct?
Yes.
It's not going to be a warrant article this time.
Okay.
But we're asking that it be continued to the fall.
No worries.
Special town meeting.
Thank you, sir, for clarifying. So actually, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we not include Article 31 on tonight's warrant on the final annual town meeting warrant, and that Article 32 be changed to Article 31.
A second?
Any discussion? If not, let's vote, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Selectman, Selectman's office.
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Article 32, to act upon any other business that lawfully may be introduced at said meeting, hear of, fail not, and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as a foreset, given on our hands this 12th day of May in the year of our law, 2021, and of the independence of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the 245th, Commonwealth, the 245th, and it's to be signed with the Board of Selectmen. I'll entertain a motion to put Article 32 on the warrant for June 7th.
So moved.
Annual town meeting. Is there a second?
Second, under discussion.
Yes.
If we drop Article 31, this 32 will be 31?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks for that clarification. All those in favor, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Selectman's office.
Aye.
And Campa Chico is also an aye. So have we met all our obligations?
We have.
To put the articles on the, on the warrant, and we made our recommendations. I don't see a need for recommendation on Article 31 now.
Never.
It's now 31.
Can't complain too much. One time, Selectman Gulat and I finished the reading when I, my first year, it was literally 2:00 AM.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. That was pretty good. Good job.
Just keep in mind, the alarm's going to go off.
(laughing).
At 11:00. So I, I hope to be done before. Review, discuss, and act on employee vacation time update. Town Administrator, I believe you submitted a, you've sent a letter to all department heads.
Yes, I did, Mr. Chilik. Just, I just want to clarify, originally, there was accompanying, there was accompanying information that went out as feedback to the memo. That feedback has, has since been withdrawn, but after the last meet, after the board's last meeting, I did send the included memo out, like really setting out what the expectation was that came out of the meeting, and we discussed it at the department head meeting as well this morning. I've had conversations individually with department heads, with employees, with union representatives, you know, and everyone is, everyone understands the, the point and the intent of the memo, where we are, what the board's direction is from the last meeting, and everyone is working to, you know, make sure they're in a place to adhere to that as well.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, thank you for that.
Town Administrator Mullin, I, I'm sorry, I missed the first part. There was department head feedback or employee feedback that was withdrawn, and I'm not asking for names or anything. I just missed that.
Yes, there was department head and employee feedback that was actually submitted but then withdrawn.
Okay, like concerns with the decision or?
Asking for more flexibility.
Okay.
A special request.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Review, discuss, and act on Winter Street time, provide us with an update on this, Town Administrator.
So yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Included in your packet, as a result of, I believe, the April 22nd, a letter that I sent on behalf of the town to DEP. On Friday, May 7th, we received a response from DEP, and actually, if I could just read that really quick, just for the public edification, it says, Dear Mr. Mullin, in response to your letter to Mass. DEP regarding the Order of Conditions issued by the Taunton Conservation Commission on the DEP File Number SE0732874, DEP has contacted the Taunton Conservation Commission to determine whether our butters to the project site had been notified as required by the Wetlands Protection Act. It was confirmed that the applicant had failed to properly notify one of butter, the Dyton Water District, which owns a 62-acre parcel of budding the project site. The Taunton, the Taunton Conservation Commission subsequently contacted Jeff Clunin, Superintendent of the Dyton Water District, to inform him that an order of conditions had been issued for work on an abutting parcel in Taunton. The Taunton Conservation Commission also contacted the applicant regarding this issue, and it was agreed that the applicant would cease all activity authorized by the order conditions, and that the public hearing before the commission would be reopened with our butters receiving proper notice of the reopened public hearing, thereby giving our butters an opportunity to communicate with the commission, can, or an applicant any concerns about the project. After, after the reopened public hearing is closed, the commission will, will issue an amended order of conditions for this project. Based on the actions taken by the Taunton Conservation Commission to address this issue, DEP has determined that there is no need for the Taunton Conservation Commission or DEP to issue a cease and desist at this time. Thank you for bringing this matter to my attention. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. And that is I'm David Johnson, the Deputy Regional Director, Bureau of Water Resources, DEP Southeast, Southeast Region. Subsequent to receiving Mr. Johnson's email this past Friday, actually, yesterday, just by happenstance, we found out that the, that the reopen hearing that, like actually, DEP had referenced in the, like in the email, has been scheduled for this coming Monday night, which is May 17th, 2021. It's scheduled at Taunton City Hall, 15 Summer Street in Taunton at 6:00 PM, and, and the second item on the agenda is a reopen of the hearing for Winter Street Drawers Estates, which is, which is a project in question. So there is, although, a very quick turnaround in terms of, you know, our notification from DEP, and when the hearing is actually scheduled for this coming Monday night, there is the, the opportunity for Dyton and Dyton abutters to communicate any questions, any concerns, any questions about impact to the Taunton Conservation Commission. Like, I believe internally, there are some, you know, there were some departments that are already calling any questions or questions about impacts together. You know, again, it is a abbreviated timeline, so we're trying to do that in very quick stead, but just wanted to give everybody an update on that. I'd be happy to take any questions or.
Does the board have any questions?
None of them.
I just want to thank Mr. Gulat for bringing this to our attention.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin, as well as our conservation agent on acting on this. So I appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Selectman's report, I will start, I will give a COVID update. This, this is from the Board of Health, our local Board of Health in Dyton. From May 3rd to May 9th of 2021, we've had four confirmed positive cases. Total number of positives to date is 726. Deaths, there were no deaths this past week. Deaths to date is seven. Total incoming calls for the Board of Health is 160. Total outgoing tracing calls is 32. Homebound registered is one. Number of residents pre-registered by the Board of Health is two. And number of calls for vaccine assistance was six. From Thursday to Wednesday, May 3rd to May 9th, there were confirmed positive, five cases, that was Sunday to, Monday to Sunday. Zero to ages 19, we had two. 20 to 29 is one. 30 to 39 is zero. 40 to 49 is one. 50 to 64 is zero. 65 to 74 is zero, and 75 plus is one. So total to date is 731 cases. And fully vaccinated individuals from May 3rd to May 9th, we've added 257. From ages zero to nine, it's seven for a total of seven that, that week, from May 3rd to May 9th. Total of 42, 20 to 29, a total of 203. 30 to 39, it's a total of 678. 50 to 64, 804. 65 to 74 is 555, and 75 plus is 342, for a total of $2,624, $24.
Budget on your back.
Those numbers are great. I'm glad people are getting vaccinated. I can't stress enough how important it is to get vaccinated. Pfizer was approved by the CDC and FDA for ages 12 to 15. My 12-year-old granddaughter has the appointment tomorrow. We have one grandson that's left to be vaccinated. He's not old enough yet, but I can't stress enough how important it is to get vaccinated. This is the reason why the numbers are going down. And for Massachusetts, as of yesterday, we had no deaths from COVID-19, which is amazing that we're getting to that point. So if people wear their masks, I know how frustrating that is, the social distance, and also to get, to get vaccinated, I, I see that we can beat this and things will get better, and I'm just looking forward to when we don't have to wear these masks. And I, I just can't tell you the avan, advantage of being vaccinated. I was able to hug my grandchildren over the weekend for my wife's Mother's Day and my children, and it was just, it's just great. So please continue doing the great job the, the residents are doing as far as vaccination. The other thing I want to mention is that the ADA coordinator, myself and Nicole Mello from the Commission on Disability, has met with the group that's working on the James Briggs Garden next door to, well, a property now, but next door to town hall, to make sure it's ADA compliant. They're doing a great job, and the ADA coordinator is working on talking about possible grants to assist them, and I noticed the past couple of days that the highway departments have been working over there clearing out the land, and they hope that sometime in the fall, they're going to be able to make the raised beds and begin some of the soil amendments to the gardens, and in the springtime, actually have the gardens going. So I just want to thank them for all the great work that they're doing. But that's my Selectman's report. Any other reports that?
I don't have a formal report, but I would just like to add, based off of your feedback regarding the community garden, I, I forget the exact name, but they have named it, I think.
Yeah, they don't, it's not a community garden, it's the James Briggs Garden.
James Briggs, yep. So regarding the garden next door, the Agricultural Commission does have a budget for FY '21, and I would, if we could please reach out to the custodians, Ms. Montero, Ms. Barr, and also Ms. Patricio, and ask them if there's any supplies that they think that they're going to need for the garden next year. They may want to think about starting to purchase those basic gardening tools if we don't already have them and if they're not donated.
Yeah, that, that is the plan, and we met Friday with them. They're going to attend the Agricultural Commission's meeting, I think it's on Monday, I think so.
Third Tuesday, I think.
Is it Tuesday?
Yeah.
Oh, they're going to meet with them, and they're going to talk about some of the things they want to do with the money that's in the account this year.
Yep.
And they've also, the Finance Committee, as well as us, has recommended that the Agricultural Commission be funded the same, so that next year they'd be able to assist the, the people that run the garden over there.
Okay.
So the funds are going to be the same, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, new business. Board of Selectmen's meeting scheduled for July through December. Everybody had the opportunity to look at the, the schedule?
Yes.
Any questions on the schedule? Anybody have plans that may interfere with that, that schedule? I see that we're meeting once in November, but we're going to meet three times in December to make up for that, so. I think it's, obviously, Selectman Hull, this is your first time dealing with this. If there's something that comes up that you cannot attend the meeting, we, and you give us enough notice, we can change the date of our meeting. So this is what we're recommending, this is the schedule that we're going to go by, but things happen, life happens, and we, we've changed in the past, and we will continue to change in the future, so.
Thank you very much.
I know vacations aren't really too much of an option this, this year around, but as well as last year, so. I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this schedule for June, excuse me, July 1st through December 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Selectman's office.
Aye.
And Campa Chico is also an aye. Commission on Human Rights, this is a, a letter that we received from the vice chair, to whom it may concern, this is addressed to the Board of Selectmen as vice chair of the Dyton Commission on Human Rights. I would like to request that the Dyton Board of Selectmen appoint Jennifer Tukowski to be the newest member of our commission. Thank you, Jill Haru. Just so, you know. Just so, you know, uh, we had three candidates at the, uh, the last Human Rights Committee meeting that were to be interviewed. Uh, one did not attend the meeting, one left the meeting, and Jen Dukowski was present, and she was interviewed, and there was a recommendation that she be on the Human Rights Commission, so I will.
And it was the whole, I'm, I didn't mean to.
I'll entertain a motion.
It was the whole, it was the whole commission? It was the whole committee that voted? Cause the letter just came from the Vice Chair, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, she was elected Vice Chair. The whole, uh, those committee members, we had a forum, not everybody attended, but it was unanimous, uh, that Jen Dukowski. I, uh, because I'm the liaison for the Human Rights, I'm a Board of Selectmen, I didn't ask any questions of her, knowing that I would be voting on.
Sure.
Their recommendations, so, uh, but it was unanimous.
Mm-hmm.
So, oh.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a question?
I was actually going to make a motion.
Why don't you make the motion? Selectman Hull make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jennifer Dukowski to the Commission of Human Rights.
Is there a second?
That was a great pronunciation. It took me like three years to get it correct.
I'm still dealing with Zokraus.
Dr. Z is.
Dr. Z is what I'm calling.
Mr. Z, whatever.
I do the same thing. I have a speech impediment too, but it works.
He doesn't have that.
But I'm here along us, I should know. Uh, any questions? If not, any discussion? If not, uh, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. Next item is review, discuss, and act on surges contract awards for DPW paper and office supplies. I believe we've been given all this information.
Mm-hmm.
With all the figures and the cost, we've, in the past, we've approved these, uh, these contracts.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any question on any of the, uh, information that's been presented to us?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
So I'll entertain a, a motion to award these, uh, surge with these contracts for DPW paper and office supplies.
Just a point of order, Ms.
Sure.
May I ask a question of the town administrator? Mr. Administrator, do we want to do them separately, meaning first is the DPW supply, and then make a motion and vote on that, and then et cetera, et cetera? Or do them all as prepared tonight in one?
I think all as prepared and recommended, I think is, uh, fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Just a reminder, Dr. Z, you're going to be out of here by 11:00.
Well, I didn't, I was hoping you said that.
Thank you. That was my question also, but I kept it to myself. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if you're entertaining motions, uh, I make a motion that we award the DPW supply, the paper supply, and the office supplies to the bidders as listed in the packet tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. Item, uh, under new business, item, uh, 12D, review, discuss, and act on Pure Oasis 620 Spring Street approval for a virtual community outreach, uh, meeting. Do we have somebody here from?
So yes, Mr. Chair, we do have, uh, Colby Evans, Colby Evans from Pure Oasis, uh, here with us this evening. Uh, but as I understand it, um, actually, Mr. Evans and I, um, have been working, uh, to schedule, um, a community outreach meeting that, um, is actually required of all dispensaries and cultivators, uh, as part of their, uh, citing and licensing product process, uh, through the Cannabis Control Commission. So this, um, is the next step, um, uh, in the process for Pure Oasis. Uh, right now, um, it's a potential date, uh, that is being looked at, subject to confirmation, and, um, actually Pure Oasis receiving, um, all of your butters' lists and everything else to go forward, um, is June 10th, which is a Thursday, uh, that, um, I don't want to speak for Mr. Evans, but I assume that is subject to change based on the finalization. Uh, but, um, I believe in accordance with the Cannabis Control Commission rules, uh, and/or regulations in order to, um, hold a virtual community outreach meeting, uh, that a Pure Oasis just needs the approval of the Board of Selectmen, uh, to be able to do that. Am I correct, Mr. Evans?
Okay, sorry about that. Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. So, uh, we have a meeting on June 9th, so maybe we can let the public, if it's confirmed that it's going to be June 10th, let the public know on June 9th that it's going to be a virtual, uh, community outreach, uh, meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion. Oh, did you want to make a motion? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve, bear with me just a moment, approve tentatively the virtual community outreach meeting for Pure Oasis for 620 Spring Street for June 10th, 2021. And this, and with the understanding that this may be subject to change?
Uh, yes, I can technically, you don't have to approve the meeting date, you just have to allow the meeting to be held virtually.
You want to reword that?
Can we strike that?
Yes, scratch that.
Mr. Chairman.
Strike it from the record.
Absolutely, from your memories as well. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, tentatively approve the ver- actually, we'll just approve the virtual community outreach meeting for Pure Oasis at 620 Spring Street.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any, any discussion? If not, uh.
If we're going to attend, will we have to also post it?
We should probably post it, but I don't plan on asking any questions. I would just sort of be there, like, in an observatory.
You're not going to ask any questions?
No, I will, I will reach out to him personally if I have a question. I promise.
Just put that in the minutes.
You have to bring that to the meeting, too.
That was a valid point. I may have some questions, you may have some questions, uh, so we, uh, we should post it as a Board of Selectmen's meeting, and I'm sure we'll be given the information.
Yes.
It's going to be Zoom or something similar to Zoom.
And if we're still under discussion, I just wanted to add, and I was privy to some of those emails that went back and forth, and, um, I, I'm very excited about the potential for what this will bring to our town, so I just want to thank everyone, especially you, Town Administrator Mullen, for, um, really just being, uh, an invaluable resource for Mr. Evans on this.
I, like, into echo that, too. I mean, it's really a pleasure working with Mr. Evans, uh, you know, I mean, uh, in my opinion, really, the vision he has for, uh, the property for his business, uh, 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 and the pride he already is bringing to Dyton, uh, like, really speaks, uh, you know, volumes in all the conversations I've had. So this is an exciting process we're backing on, so.
It is, and I wish, uh, Pure Oasis the, the best of luck on this. I'm, I'm looking forward to it, uh, opening up. So I'll call for a vote. It was a second, right? Call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico, also an aye. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
It's been approved. Thank you.
Did you guys?
You too.
So the, the next couple of items, let me read, uh, the letter. This was addressed to the, uh, Board, uh, to a town administrator in the Board of Selectmen. Uh, said, "Dear gentlemen, this is Correspondence, uh, 13A. It is with great excitement that I finally and officially announced my retirement from my full-time assesses position as of July 31st, 2021. I will continue to serve on the Board of Assessors until at least my term expires in April of 2022. After 23-plus years, I have to say, I was very fortunate to be hired part-time between a town clerk, treasurer, collector, and the assesses department in March of 1998. Although I am very excited, it also with mixed emotions. What do you do after working so many years full-time? I'm sure it won't take me long to figure that out. Probably run for selectman." As I did. "I enjoyed my time here and became a full-time assessor in March of 20, uh, 2007. I have seen many changes here, all for the better. The town of Dyton will continue to grow at a fast rate of speed, and we will see many more changes. Be assured, the assesses office will continue to be in good hands no matter who will replace me, and with the two awesome full-time employees Valerie Wilson and Lisa Tetro. They are very hard workers and do anything to continue to run the department to its fullest expectations. The residents of Dyton, I would like you to know, if you don't know already, the whole town of Dyton has very devoted employees in all departments, and I am very much enjoyed, and I very much enjoyed having to work with them in all different capacities. I would also like to thank everyone who has supported me over the course of my career here in Dyton. Cecily, Carol Beauregard." Well, that's sad news.
I know.
Well, it's good for her, but it's, it's, it's sad news. I will ent- entertain a motion to, uh, accept and approve the resignation.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the res- accept, excuse me, approve. You, you can't retire until we let you. That we accept the resignation letter of Mrs. Carol Beauregard with thanks and appreciation for over two decades of dedicated service to our residents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to very briefly say, um, Mrs. Beauregard, I know you're not watching, but if you ever watch the replay, um, it has been such a pleasure working with you. You were always there for me when I would come in the office. You dropped everything to answer my asinine questions. Um, you were just such a valuable resource for me, especially when I got elected and didn't, um, really know the ropes, and I just really want to thank you for, um, everything you've done for our town and everything you do for the other elected officials and appointed officials. You will be very missed, um, and I hope to remain in contact with you with my stupid questions, so thank you very much.
Any other discussion? I would also like to thank Carol for all the work she's done for this town, and I hope she, uh, enjoys her retirement and has a good time in retirement. I'll call for a vote. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. Correspondence B, Dear Chief, this is addressed to Chief Robert McDonald, uh, Police Chief, dated April 21st. Dear Chief, I am writing to inform you of my resignation as a special police officer effective April 21st. That can't be 2001.
21, I think.
2021. It has been an honor and privilege to have served the town of Dyton for 50 years, 50 years, as a reserve and special officer, respectfully submitted Roger Duatt. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the resignation of Mr. Roger Duatt with thanks and appreci- appreciation, excuse me, for 50 years of dedicated service and commitment to our town and our residents.
Is there a?
I second it.
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you, sir.
Selectman Hull?
Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity, as a member of the Dyton Hobbit Regional School Committee, to vote on Mr. Duatt's retirement as a teacher, an outstanding teacher, I might add. On that particular night, I voted no, because I didn't want to see him leave.
I didn't know you could do that.
But this time, I won't do the same.
Oh.
I will say this. Roger has made an unbelievable contribution to this community as an educator and as a police officer, and has been a role model for so many people and so many children. I might also add, that Mr. Duatt was a member of the class of 61, along with another outstanding contributor to this town, Nancy Gulat, along with another member, I believe, a former selectman, and Ed Reese. Was he in that class, or was he?
No. I'm, I'm not sure that.
Ed grew up, I think, in Rehoboth. No, he wasn't in my class. No. He was, he's not that old.
We are going to be sending Mr. Duatt a letter of appreciation, is that correct?
You can, uh, make that motion if you, if you wish.
We can.
Let's vote on the, this motion, and then you can make that motion.
Okay.
Uh, I'll call for a vote. If there's no further discussion, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Duatt for 50 years of dedication to the town of Dyton. It's, uh, that's unbelievable. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. You want to make a motion?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that a letter of appreciation for outstanding service to the town of Dyton for his years as an educator and for his 50 years as a reserve and special officer for the town of Dyton be sent to Mr. Roger S. Duatt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, let's, I'll call for a vote. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. We have a third, uh, resignation. This, uh, was addressed to me, because I'm the liaison for the Human Rights Committee. It's from Sean Cassidy. "Ken, I hate to, to be doing this, but I have to resign from Human Rights. I have some health issues that will need some attention, and it will take some time to deal with. I hope you will accept my resignation at this time, and when things get better, I can reapply to join back up." I can just tell you, Sean was the chairman of the Human Rights Committee. He's done a lot of work. Uh, he's a strong believer in, uh, Human Rights. I wish him well on, uh, his health situation, and, uh, look forward to him getting better and joining the, uh, Human Rights, uh, Commission in the near future, hopefully. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the resignation email of Mr. Sean Cassidy with thanks and appreciation for his hard work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. Are there any acknowledgements?
No acknowledgements.
Minutes. I'm going to ask for a motion to accept or review the minutes from the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of April 7th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, uh, call for a vote. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. Approval of the warrants. I almost want to ask Mrs. Gulat.
Old habits.
Sitting here to do this. Warrant stated, uh, May 5th, 2021. I'm going to be asking for a motion on this. 45A-21 payroll, $98,494.2 in 44B-21, uh, $393,207.69.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the warrant as read by the chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. Warrant stated, May 12th, 2021. 46A-21, $98,731.73, 46B-21, $161,059.31. I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the warrant stated May 12th, 2021, as read by the chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, uh, call for a vote. Uh, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye. Public input. Did we, I know, Mrs. Gulat, you want to speak, but did we get any emails or phone calls or?
No emails.
Thank you. Mrs. Gulat?
Did you hear the first part, when I was talking about, and they, legislation that deals with reforestation? So, I will get that to Mrs. Brady, so it can be sent out.
Thank you.
It's quite lengthy, but there's a lot in it that could be beneficial to the environment. So, um, Brook Street Solar, that's the one that's got the letters and numbers for the name, the one we can't pronounce. I was contacted by Robert Thompson, who is the person that seems to be the problem solver as of late, or has solved all the problems we've had to date. And he was calling because the culvert that they said was on its way from North Carolina has not been constructed. They're having problems with getting materials. He brought up the cyber attack on the gas line for all these delays. I will point out, when we had our first meeting, pre-construction, the first thing they attempted was to change the type of culvert, and they were told no. I think, I copied you on that, Mr. Pacheco. So, anyhow, now the problem is, the culvert is, who knows if it's ever going to be built? So, they want permission to use steel plates to cross the ditch. So, I told Mr. Thompson I would have to check with Mr. Ferry and Mr. Agia and Mr. Mullin and, and ask them what they think about the whole thing. So, where we are right now, and I called Mr. Thompson before I came here tonight, after meeting with Mr. Agia and Mr. Mullin this afternoon and having input from Mr. Ferry, the first thing they need to do is to update the SWIP. The SWIP is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, because now they've got to include in it these steel plates. We're going on the assumption they're going to do the steel plates as a temporary fix so they can get onto the property and start clearing it. So, that's the first thing they have to do, and that's going to go to Mr. Pilling for review. And anything that they do on that property is going to be overseen by Mr. Agia, Mr. Pilling, and/or Mr. Ferry. Especially, the plates should be readily available if they're going to use them, so that could happen next week, maybe, but that's only going to happen if we get that SWIP in and it's approved. So, they want the plates to go in so they can enter the property and clear the land. Well, obviously, they're not going to be able to have parking immediately, so I told them that the parking restriction is going to be on the north side of Brook Street. We don't want them parking on Pine Street. We don't want them anywhere near the corner. And there's a mandatory police detail onsite while they're putting in those plates, because they were down there doing some things a week ago, and the first complaint we got, one of the requirements we had was that there would be police on duty. They didn't call for one, so now they're told they get a mandatory one to put those plates in for traffic and safety reasons. The signs aren't up yet, to the best of my knowledge. They're on order, because Mr. Ferry has approved them, so supposedly they're on order. Now, um, Mr. Agia has required that he get a written plan of logistics that relate to these plates, right down to the nitty-gritty as far as the size, the dimensions, the amount of weight, maximum weight they can support. Mr. Ferry gave Mr. Agia instructions on things to do, if you will, to shore up the side of the ditches so that these plates don't cause the ditch to crumble. Fortunately, there's no water in the ditch at this time. It's been relatively dry. But that can be a problem, too, because it can get grumbling. When they get on the property to clear land, another condition is, they can, um, entry onto the property is only going to be egress. They can get the heavy equipment on the property, and they can clear the land. They've got a stockpile of stumps, the trees, and anything they're not going to use onsite, like chips they'll probably use onsite. They're not going to be allowed to exit the site over the plates. They'll be allowed to cross to get in there with their equipment. But we're not going to allow trucks back and forth, because we figured this is, this is, the plates are only to get them on the property. Exit from the property's got to be once they get the culvert in. Now, the other thing is, I've got to get in touch with Attorney Costa, because I got to find out what kind of wording we need to reference in the license agreement that you all approved, because the basic wording I'm looking for is that the town of Dayton will allow them to use the plates under the conditions that I've listed, and that everything in the license agreement relative to protecting the town from liability carries over to any amendment. The, um, the other thing will be, um, once we get the wording and things like that, the question will be whether or not it has to come back to the board for a vote, or if you would allow the town administrator to sign it. Obviously, if it's coming back to the board, it's two weeks away. It may take longer than two weeks to get this done anyhow. Mr. Thompson was not jumping with joy, saying they can't wait to get started under these conditions. But I will also tell you that, um, we are concerned about the fact that they can't get on the property. And I have given them information from Mr. Ferry. One was the culvert company Precast from Berkeley. And Mr. Thompson told me he contacted them, and they gave him a 10-week potential. He still thinks he's going to have one up here from one of the Carolinas in two to three weeks, when they don't have materials to build it yet, but we'll see. I also gave him the name of Rotundo in Rehoboth, and he did contact that company, and they're going to get back to him Monday with a quote. I said to him, "You know, who you use is up to you. We're only suggesting there may be potential local suppliers, but certainly, who you use is up to you." So, that's where we are with this.
We use Berkeley ourselves, I believe.
Yes, Mr. Ferry does. And he said that, Mr. Thompson said that Mr. Berkeley Precast Company had said that 10 weeks, which surprised me. But anyhow, Mr. Mullin was involved in this, and Mr. Mullin, if you want to give the board your take on this, where we are with this.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Gulat. Uh, this, uh, every step of the way, there's something, but things are moving. I, right now, like, I would recommend, let's try to see what the timing is with the SWIP and, uh, with the updated SWIP and then coming back before. But I just think, like, especially to get it, uh, something memorialized through an agenda item as well, uh, you know, just in line with the open meeting law, like, I don't think two weeks. Like, if we can do everything that Miss Gulat said, uh, like, both on our side and from Grasshopper's side, I believe Grasshopper would still receive a really good benefit in terms of assistance. Uh, so I, I, I think aiming for the 26th to have, if we need to have an amendment or any type of side-type of letter through the license agreement, uh, we can really, it can be considered in full at that time. That's just my thought, but it really has been a labor of love and a team effort. Uh, you know, like, with everyone, from Mr. Agia to Mr. Ferry, to Mr. Pilling, to Miss Caledonia.
To former Selectman Gulat.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, this thing, it's a labor of love, but.
I think they're used to, I'll say, wheeling and dealing. So, because I hear frequently, "Well, other towns," I says, "this is Dayton. I don't want to hear about other towns." And, um, the, um, email that I copied Chairman Pachico on, you could tell from the requests, um, they just don't get it. And Mr. Ed, the gentleman that sent, he did write back and say, "Thank you very much for your lengthy explanation." I'm sure he had other words that he didn't put in that email. But we're not trying to make life miserable for him. As I said, um, I don't think Mr. Ferry or Mr. Agia felt comfortable in recommending anybody. I just did it as an aside. I'm not connected to any of these companies or anything else. And if I told them, I said, "If I have any other names of Precast companies, I'll get into it." You know, whether it's Berkeley or the Rehoboth Company, my guess is, they're probably within 12 miles of the site, and they think they're going to have something, as I said, we're, I gave him all the terms and conditions. He's going to get back to me. Most of the things in there, time-wise, are going to be controlled by them. I will send an email to Matt, and I will copy you on it, just to tell Matt, here's the latest development. We need to be ready if we have to have some language just to amend this. But, um, uh, their other option is wait until you find your, get your own contract. But we are, we, the town is doing everything it can, but by the same token, we're still protecting the town. So, that's where we are with this.
Thank you. Selectmen Hall?
My question is to the town manager. Mrs. Gulat, you mentioned their attorneys were involved, correct? The reviewing?
Well, our attorney, Matt Costa.
Right.
And I assume, I assume, somebody for Grasshopper reviewed it. I, I'm quite, as a matter, yes, I know they did, because we had a broad statement about the Selectmen's right to revoke for, I forgot what we said. And they wrote back and said, "Well, what is, that's too broad. What does that mean?" So, I said to Matt, "Okay." So, we listed every possible law and bylaw, things we, we could list, from, from the Wetlands Protection Act to the town's bylaws, to the EPA. And then the last part of it was, "And any other applicable law or regulation not listed herein?" I mean, so, they didn't come back after that, as far as revoke.
Who is, which department is paying the legal fees?
If it's our council, I think it's the, it's the town council budget line. But only the chair or the magistrate.
And that would be a discretion, every spending that we voted that would come under your domain, Mr. Mullin?
Depending on the cost.
Yeah, yeah, depending on the cost. Those bills are usually very much under the limit.
Oh, yeah. Because they, they bill them by the hours, so, so it might, you might see an email, a correspondence with me, and then there might be a space, and then you'll see, again, a reference to, let's say, Brook Street Solar. But yes, the other thing I will tell you is, the pilot agreements, and this is one of the companies that is asking for a pilot that's on the warrant, there's a clause in there that states that the developer will pay the town $5,000 to offset the cost of legal expenses and recording. So, um, we don't hit those kind of costs as far as legal expenses. And quite frankly, if we did, we'd be telling them we want more money to cover it. But these, this is a clause outside of the other kinds of special accounts we have, where we ask them to put money aside for maintenance of basins and things like that. So, uh, and I know the Brook Street decommissioning bond has already been posted. They've paid their stormwater fee, which was less than $3,000, but they've also paid their building permit, which is in excess of $80,000. It's like $86,000. It's a big number. It's almost $90,000 so far, just in permitting, that they have paid. The $50,000 bond is for decommissioning, and then stormwater has a bond on the basins. If they don't keep them maintained, we will maintain them and bill them, and they'll have to put money back into those accounts. And the other one is the maintenance of the ditch that they have to cross. There's a, um, an account to cover that also, that they have to maintain it, so.
Hey, I just, may I add something else, if you don't mind? The council bills that Selectwoman Gulat, former Selectwoman Gulat is referring to, do come to the Selectmen, so we can review them, and then we initial them, and they're usually on, like, a colored paper, either blue or purple or something.
Yeah, usually blue, yeah. Or lavender sometimes, but nah.
And it gives a short description of what it is. So, if you ever have a question, you can ask Town Administrator Mullin.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Someone asked-
Is there any other public input?
Someone asked if the audio cut out, Mr. Tom Gulucci. It's not that it cut out, Mr. Gulucci, it's that Selectman Gul, former Selectman Gulat was standing at the podium, and the, the audio from the, um, excuse me, the microphone from the laptop, it can't pick, pick her up. So, if you would like to hear her portion, then you need to watch the Channel 9 meeting. You can hear it, or, no, YouTube would be the Zoom.
Is YouTube the Zoom?
Yeah.
We're going to upload this version to YouTube also.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, so you can just re-watch it, that's all, sorry.
Is there any other input?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention, the Stormwater Committee meeting is going to be, the next Stormwater Committee meeting is the 26th of May, 1:00. This will be on it along with the Winthrop Street that he's describing, and we have three or four other, um,
Concerns?
WAM topics. They're not hot yet, but they're WAM. That, uh, when the, um, agenda comes out, you want them to take a look at them. Uh, one, one cease and desist, two, one property was in receipt of two cease and desists for illegal dumping. And they've hired an attorney, and I informed him he could come to the meeting with his clients or whatever. But, um, that's just some of the stuff that's coming up.
May I touch base with you offline?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can talk to you guys now without filing the open meeting law.
Okay, I was just, I guess my question, no, I'll just ask you.
Okay.
I was, I was wondering about the location, that's all, for anyone that was curious.
Is there any other public input for anybody on Zoom? If not, I will, I believe we're at the point where we can, I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico is also an aye.
Thank you, Cable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Good night.
Good night.